Welcome. We are on, welcome everybody to the City Council meeting for April 16th. If we please have your call. Mayor Rick Partridge, that would be Mayor Dexter here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Kay, here. Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Maureen.
Here.
Councilmember Cheryl Lauren.
Here.
Mayor Joyce.
President.
Attorney Lawrence.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Councils, the authority to receive, Mayor Joyce has a special introduction to me.
Madam Mayor, Council, you want to introduce this evening Aubrey Price. And Aubrey is representing the Parks and Recreation Department. She's our Senior and our Manager. And she's come to us previously with the New York Parks and Recreation Department. And she served on January 7th. So we'd like to welcome Aubrey this evening.
Welcome Aubrey. So let's rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are going to begin with the awards.
You ready?
Hello.
I think this is supposed to be an awkward moment. I'm never awkward, so whoa. I'm Becca Corby. I'm the Executive Director of Healthy Families Call. Can I? I was just gonna say Madam Mayor, but hello, Madam Mayor. And Councilmembers and up there and you there. I was here a couple of weeks ago. We were doing the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. And there was a stamping of some scheduling. There are two awards that need to be given out. And so I appreciate your help in doing that. And then Chief Smith is here. Not only is he a board member of Healthy Families, but because he's coming to help me out with these two, one individual and another collective group. The gratitude award is an award that Healthy Families started a long time ago. When I can remember when they started. And so it's grown into a little tangible kind of a prestigious award, which is an award recognizing people in our community who have gone above and beyond in the opinion of a multidisciplinary team in the fields of domestic and sexual violence. And these awards have gone to law enforcement and medical personnel and citizens. And I've forgotten one, so I guess I'm not doing anything about them beyond domestic and sexual violence, but we'll see. And so the names are nominated. And then this multidisciplinary team, which is about 20 people, vote and then people win, which is very exciting. And so this is a very important award for me to give out because this is a small community with limited resources. Our law enforcement is spread thin. Our law enforcement is also responding really well to domestic and sexual violence. And on those few occasions when it's not necessarily what I would think would be great, then I just make a couple of phone calls and things usually get fixed. And I'm very impressed with that. I'm very grateful for that. So that's a, do you have anything you want to add before we award?
Well, no, I don't think it's very important that we recognize people who go to the extra distance to help victims and people in crisis and all sorts of situations. You know, Becca's done a great job of recognizing people.
I'm sorry.
So you've done a great job and Healthy Families has done a great job of recognizing people in a variety of jobs that often we just, we don't think about. Like our number one dispatch staff, they really are the first to approach your partners. And if you're a person in crisis and you're picking up the phone and calling a stranger, these are the people that help you. These are the people that often will sleep at night, you know, thinking about what's happened to you and if they've done anything they can to help you. So thank you, Becca, and thank you, our awesome staff, for the work they do.
Thank you. Just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea, Healthy Families is your community-based domestic and sexual violence program and also the only nationally accredited children's advocacy center on the Northern Peninsula. That took a lot of blood, sweat and tears to open that. And here's just a little snippet. In fiscal year 18, so that would have been from July 1 of 17 to June 30 of 18, we housed the emergency in rich housing, 11,000 and about 400 bed nights. This little community, 11,000, I'm sure that you think about those numbers. That's a lot of people. That's an average of about 32 people a night. That's a lot of people in need. Second thing, we average one and a half child sexual assaults a week through our Children's Advocacy Center, which doesn't seem like a lot to some people. You put the per capita and skin company, we're all normal. And you figure for each of those one and a half reported, there are 10 to 20 unreported. So this is a pretty community. We live in a pulse target. Please take a reality check. There's someone here who I think lives in a little celebrity heart community, Amy Miller. Because Amy is out there on the streets trying to scoop up the homeless. There's a lot of whining, griping and gnashing teeth about the homeless. We don't want to see them. They're out there, they're real. And there is only by the grace of God, are they not us? Okay? So thank you to Amy for all of her work. Okay, so I first want to ask Steve Robbins to come up. And Steve might not be a familiar name to some of you. And if he is, I'm sorry that you'd have to get to know him. He is an attorney who is also the head honcho at Northwest Justice Project. For those of you who don't know what Northwest Justice Project is, excuse me if there's a minute. I really like this guy. Steve, Steve's amazing. There is a process of going through to get an attorney, right? Everybody knows when you need an attorney, things are usually not all the outcome for you. Things are maybe a little bit hoopy. Then you come down that with homelessness, poverty, mental illness, substance abuse, and all these things come on top of each other. And there's a process to get through Steve to Steve through a referral system. And then we wait for the call from Seattle and blah, blah, blah. Steve Robbins has since pretty much day one, and I'm deeply grateful for it, said to me, you need me, here's my cell phone number. And I try not to abuse it, but he is there, Johnny on the spot. And many of our clients' health couldn't make it getting the protection order without his help. Couldn't do the parenting without his help. Have finally reached the point where they need the dissolution of the divorce and they get his help. So Steve, on behalf of our agency, our clients, the community, thank you very much.
I know I've been saying, I think this is kind of like law school. My first year, getting in front of everybody, talking about cases I do nothing about. It's great working with Healthy Families. Their advocates are really into what they do. They really helped me, represent our clients. They do a lot of the life work, they get a lot of documents together. And they come in the interviews and actually you're extremely helpful in breaking down the barriers, had the ties, telling the story, type of best friends, I think. Well, anyways, I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I am grateful, Steve, for all the work you do and our Becca. I'm also in favor of the work you've done. We owe you a million, thank you. Because you are here, over and over again advocating for everybody.
And you keep letting me in that door.
It's always open and we're willing to listen to anything that's.
We'll see how long that lasts. But thank you very much for that. Now I was wondering if I had any chance, if Carl Patton is available. There you are. I've never met your person, so I didn't know you were, sorry.
He's trying to stay under the radar.
So, hi Carl. It's very nice to meet you. Carl is a hot shot with the brand Hubba of PenCom, I take it? Okay. Because I know that, here's what happened. There was a nomination for, there were multiple nominations for employees of PenCom. And as the discussion evolved with the multidisciplinary team, it became very evident that we needed to give an award to all of PenCom. And here's why. Has anyone here ever had to call 911? Is that all? Or do I just like to have a 911? A lot of our clients need 911. And then when you think that we are housing and trying to hide people who are fleeing, women, children and men, this is a gender issue, from domestic and sexual violence, sometimes they're stalked and we have to call 911. And we encourage our clients to call 911. Here's what we'd like to thank. You and our any of the staff here?
Yes, Susan Moore.
Oh, are there more coming?
Come on up, Susan.
Wow, Susan.
So we've got PenCom Supervisor Susan Craig and we've got PenCom Assistant Coordinator Jeff.
Why don't we take advantage of this moment to say a personal thank you to you, but to let you know, for those of you who don't know the world of domestic and sexual violence, which by the way you do, because I can smell it in your stick, I would like you to know that there's trauma, keep dumb trauma, keep dumb trauma. And when you are in trauma, one of the things that shuts down is your ability to communicate your needs. And that includes help. So we often will get our crisis line, which is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We will often get calls, stay, I'm being stalked. Well, that's great, but I don't carry the same stuff that these guys do. So you probably want to call 911. This particular group of 911 operators that we have are compassionate, kind, efficient, smart, fast, and I'm not known for my patience. And when I've had an issue, I get responses really, really quickly. We are so grateful for that. Thank you very, very much for putting up with the stress. We called you a lot. You never made us feel stupid. And I can't say that about all 911 agencies. So thank you very much.
And I do want to thank you all. I've gotten a chance, and I know a lot of the council members have gotten a chance to see the work you guys do. If anybody hasn't been there, it's constant. The job is constant, the calls are coming in constantly. There's screens that bear paying attention to where's all coming from. And it covers quite a lot of areas. So we thank you, we know it's a really high-stress job and you're doing beautiful.
One of the parts of the story that's important for me as well, you know, PenCom's a division of the Police Department. And we're, I'm, my office is next door, so I'm in there every day. And so I see a lot of what they do, what they go through. But like Carl and Susan had a way to be relieved by two people, because Carl was covering a console today and Susan's supervisor. You know, 911 centers are extremely challenging places to keep staff. And we have to provide the services 365 days a year, regardless, 24 hours a day. And like we have a communications regional coordinator with Carl and a supervisor, Susan, that are working consoles. And Jeff, the guy standing there, is the guy that makes everything work. So we have three really dedicated people here. You know, it's an understatement to say that we're extremely lucky to have them. And I'm really proud of all three of them.
Thanks. Just a couple of words. I would love to have had a lot of my staff up here, but we are so short staffed that there's no one to bring up here. So when I'm working radio console, after six years of being off console, you know that things are in dire straits. So if you know people that have multitasking skills, that are quick on their feet, that can handle that kind of stress and or shift work, please have them applying, because we really could use the help. And I would like to say, I would also like to thank organizations like Healthy Families and other places like that. When I started in this industry back in the year of our Lord, 1986, there was no mandatory arrests for a suspect of domestic violence. There was no taking of someone's firearms because they were arrested for domestic violence. There was no advocacy, or there was very little. And to see the strides that have occurred in the last, especially just in the last 10 years or so, in the last 20 or 30 years, is phenomenal. Again, that's the tools. We would walk away leaving a domestic situation basically at home for us and hope that it didn't come back. And we have lots of tools that we never had before. So we've seen that in our career and I can appreciate that. So my gratitude to my staff, normally I don't work radio. I just push papers and pay bills and do administrative work. And so my staff is extraordinarily dedicated, work extremely long hours under adverse conditions and do a really amazing job. So, and thank you for the recognition, we really appreciate it.
You are welcome. Welcome.
Bye, babe.
Yep, it didn't fall apart.
Ah, so amazing work they do. So the next thing on our agenda is the Senior Board. Here we go. And who will be here for the Senior Board? Come on up, please. Senior Board, come on up. Welcome. Welcome, come on in now. We've got plenty of space, so let's spread out this way. I'm sure everybody fits in here. So before I read this, why don't I pass the mic down and you guys can identify yourselves.
I'm Aubrey, with the Parks Department and the Senior Center. And I'm very excited to be here and acknowledge all their hard work while I was getting myself over here. And so I'm excited for them to be recognized and to have some of their hard work be shown today.
I'm Connie Hanke. I'm Patty Gray and I'm President of the Board.
I'm Donna Paulback.
Karen Wolf.
Susan Booker.
Janice Seddonton, Vice President.
Diane Williams, Deputy.
Sherri.
Thank you all, thank you for coming here. We have got a proclamation here in recognition of the Senior Center Board of Directors. Whereas the Port Angeles Senior and Community Center was built in at 1995 and is co-operated and run by the City of Port Angeles and the Senior Center Board of Directors. And whereas the Board of Directors and the other volunteers of the Senior Center average approximately 18,000 volunteer hours a year, which is the equivalent of about eight to 10 full-time employees. And whereas on July 9th, 2018, the Port Angeles Senior and Community Center started a transition period when the Senior Center Manager of 16 years retired. Volunteers of the Senior Center are essential to the day-to-day operations of the Center. And they knew that this was going to be a much different challenge. And whereas over the next six months until a new Senior Center Manager was hired, the Board of Directors spent countless volunteer hours keeping the Senior Center open so that its 1,700 members and the citizens of Port Angeles would continue to use the facility on a daily basis. And whereas the Port Angeles City Council and city staff would like to celebrate April's Volunteer Appreciation Month by thanking the Port Angeles Senior Center Board of Directors for their established dedication, passion and commitment to the city, the Senior Center, and importantly, to the citizens of Port Angeles. Now therefore I, Sissy Group, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, Port Angeles Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission and city staff, do hereby thank the Senior Center Board of Directors during Volunteer Appreciation Month for all your selfless dedications and tireless support in 2018. So thank you all. Who wants to carry on the proclamation?
I've only been president for a short time, but I can name quite a few people that really volunteered a lot to keep everything right and according to oil. And it wasn't easy, but we did, I think we did it. We did a good job.
Well, thank you again. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do. That Center is amazing. If you folks haven't been out there, they have everything happening out there. I probably ever should take a look in place. There's cars, there's teams, there's PenCom. There's just a lot of different classes and all sorts of stuff. So I was really impressed with all the activities that happened there. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and we've got one more proclamation. And this is Arbor Day. Do you know who's receiving the Arbor Day?
Madam Mayor, we will have to sit in.
Okay, so we are going to read the Arbor Day proclamation. So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed for the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating, cooling, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, filter underground water and, whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Port Angeles is recognized as a Tree City USA. And an un Arbor Day observance is an important responsibility of that designation. Now therefore I, Sissy Group, Mayor of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day in the City of Port Angeles and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this for future generations. Thank you. All right, so with that, we are going to have a pool of comments. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to council, and I'm just going to go get the list real quick. Please speak to me, I'm honored to resign the city. I'm sure we have about three minutes or so for a person. All right, we will start with Susan Craig.
Hi, I am Susan Craig and I do not live in the city. And you've heard a little bit about it today with that award, but I thought I would just continue to read what I wrote down as I've been thinking about it for a while. I have been a communications officer and now a communications supervisor at PenCom for almost 14 years. Communications officers are the first of the first responders. We talk to people, we calm them, we console them and give them emergency instructions at the worst times of their lives. We do this while working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Days, nights, weekends, holidays, we always have people on duty. PenCom is at a critically low staffing level. Right now we have 10 dispatchers covering the shifts that 18 people normally do. Once we get someone hired, training at communications officer takes between five and six months if they succeed at training. And over 50% of the people don't make it off training. Our job is bad, stressful and difficult. And you really can't know if you can do the job until you get in and try to do the job. I'm here to say that we need a more competitive salary in order to keep our dispatchers. People have left our dispatch center and had a job just a few days later with almost as much pay without the stress of the 911 calls and our crazy schedule. The PenCom budget is made up from user agencies, a phone excise tax, county sales and use tax and some grants. The City of Port Angeles pays just 10% of our budget for the user fees for Port Angeles Police Department. But you have 100% control over our wages and benefits. I urge you, come in and visit us, sit with us, see what we do. There needs to be a change or we're going to continue to burn out and lose dispatchers at a rate that we can't replace them. And on average, most of our dispatchers are working between 15 and 20 hours overtime per week, just to cover. So thank you.
Thank you. Next person is April Bellman.
Hello, I have a business in the city, but I'm here to talk about the Downtown Association of Port Angeles. Just wanted to give you a quick update of what we've been up to. And since it's Volunteer Day, it seems, give a shout out to our volunteer board and community members and community volunteers for all the help they've given us. So I just wanted to let you know what's been going on last month, or month, last year. So I'll go quickly. We were, we invented new banners for downtowns, colorful new banners that were designed by local artists. John Fisher installed with the help of a grant from the Port Angeles Partners Program. We had a successful arts and crafts event that was challenging because of rain. But still, everybody hung in there and did a great job. We purchased hallway lights to be installed on the downtown trees earlier in the season this year. And that was actually quite successful. And we left them up much longer into the new year. And we're going to continue to do that because we've had positive feedback from merchants and residents that it was just really nice just to see extra lights downtown. And we had less, significantly less vandalism on those lights this year, which in my mind might be because we had the way we downtowned and it was open later and there were people moving around. So that was really great. Of course, downtown trick-or-treating is always very popular. So you don't really have to do much to advertise for that. We organized the hometown holiday event to highlight the Christmas tree lighting, the arrival of Santa and the kickoff to the holiday season. Santa arrived via the column transit this year, so that was very fun. Tim Pecker emceed the singing and storytelling to great effect. And it really was a memorable day. We rounded up 2018 with a barbecue meet and greet for the membership at the banquet room at Copecelli. We had three or more people show up and many artists around town showed up. And they really, their big message was that they wanted more support for the second Saturday event in downtown. And going into 2019, we appointed, appointed two new board members, took all compositions class by midterm resignations and elected a new executive board. We continue to recruit and welcome new board members. So everybody's out there saying, yes, please help. Monthly board meetings were held as well as bi-weekly promotions, arts and crafts and clean and safe committee meetings. We're helping the chamber update their downtown walking map with correct characters and business names. And interest has been expressed by the members in reviving a neighborhood watch program for downtown. Evidently there was one, I was totally unaware of that, but we're looking into that. And we're also planning a downtown treasure hunt to coincide with the Maritime Festival. So that'll be fun. We're hoping to incorporate the monster. And then we did have a first quarter public forum that wasn't very well attended, but it was actually very, it was good. It was very good. It was very good.
Thank you so much.
I'm Doug Glitter, I'm the vice president of the association. Have a business downtown, and I live in downtown, in the city of Port Angeles. I'm finishing up the last bit of the comments, which isn't much. Arts and drafts is scheduled this year for Friday and Saturday, September 20th and 21st. This year, we're going to try to do some more family-friendly things on Saturday. We have some really interesting music lineup for that, and we look forward to more activities as the year progresses, and I want to thank all the volunteer people that we have working. A lot of them are not business owners, that are on our volunteer committees. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Larry Etheridge.
I'm Larry Etheridge, and I live inside the city. I want to talk about traffic not being monitored. I think traffic is just getting way out of hand. The other day, I was going up C Street, past the Grandview Grocery, at 20 miles an hour, I was passed by a guy in, in the school zone. I also live on, further out on 16th, and the traffic just blows through there. I think, because I don't do numbers, I think that if a patrolman sat out there and started writing tickets, he would pay for himself rather shortly. I've had people run stop signs where I had to stop, actually stop in the street on, on Eighth, because apparently they had a reservation that I didn't know about, and I was taking up their space. But I think the traffic's gotten worse and worse. Today, coming down here, I was on Lincoln, person pulled out from UPS. I was making a left turn, I was in the left turn lane, without signaling, he just pulled into the side of me. I, fortunately, there's no one coming traffic, so we have room to avoid a collision. I'm old, I can't do that as reaction things very well anymore. I know the police department is stretched, but if people saw people getting tickets, they would, they would discontinue this type of behavior. And on 16th, going out to the dump, it's just really funny, because some of the worst offenders, city vehicles, buses, and believe it or not, people who are hurrying to pick up their kids from school, or have picked up their kids and are hurrying to get away. It just really needs, something has to be done, and a little sign that says, you're going too fast. I'm done.
Thank you so much. Gary Smith.
I'm Gary Smith, and I live in the city. I talked with a council member this morning about some of the things that's going on, and I have to agree with Larry. I even seen the city police department do the same thing, beat a red light. And it's terrible. And you've got all these people that are jaywalking, why don't we give them credit for jaywalking? You guys make rules or regulations for helmets? Nobody wears helmets unbiased. Love music? I've seen cops go by with kids, great music going and blasting, never stop and say turn it down or nothing. And as far as the homeless people, you know, I feel sorry for them, I heard all, in the city, busting them in, let's bust them back. I mean, it's, it's not just Seattle dying, we're dying here, falls. Look at all the businesses that are going out of town, and all the people that are moving out of town. And I'm thinking about doing the same thing here in a couple of years if it keeps going the way it's going with our economy. Now the city license is put 50 cents on, so we have to pay for their computing, in fact. What's going on with this town? It's time that somebody of you people put your foot down and say, hey, let's go back to the 50s and the 60s. Let's take care of what we have here now. And if you're a problem in this town, ship them back to the army. Do what they used to do. Make things work, you know, it's like you can't spank your kids, you can't do it. Hey, I'll spank mine again if I have to, man, I don't care. But it's just getting, I've been robbed a fight now, and if we should park some of those, nothing we can do about it. Just take your report and that's it. I ain't going to be robbed a third time, I can tell you that right now. I've been overseas, and I fought for my country, and I'm disgusted in it, with all the taxes and all the crap and stuff. If I had to do it again, I'd go to Canada with the rest of them. As a city council member, we, we have to start taking charge. You say you can't do nothing with the people that are homeless, get in trouble all the time, they don't pay tickets, they don't do nothing. Because we've got social security, we have to pay if we do something wrong. Put them in a pink suit, get them a broom, and then start sweeping the streets, start cleaning up the place. I mean, this is the disgrace, veteran thing down here, what they do down there. And it's like, nobody can figure out what to do. Give it to the veterans, we'll, we'll take over. We'll show you what to do with them. Thank you.
Elizabeth Dunn.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dunn, I live in the greater Port Angeles area. I want to talk to you about an incident that occurred on January 3rd in Lyons Park, which I've been here before to speak about. With one of our community members, an elder and activist, a grandmother, who actually is someone that I feel is deserving of the Arbor Day award, was arrested in the park for speaking out against the city's act of felling the sequoia tree that stood there. And she was arrested and charged with criminal trespass and with resisting arrest. And trespass means that you're somewhere you're not supposed to be. And that got me thinking, and others who were there that day, how would one know where you're supposed to be when you're in a public park? And a public park is a public forum, and a place where public can gather and speak and assemble freely under the Constitution of the United States. So that led us, because there were no signs posted, there was no indication that you were not allowed to be there that day. And that led us to ask some questions and to find that there is a, an ordinance in the city of Port Angeles that provides, this ordinance 12.04.030, and that ordinance is called closed areas, and it provides, any section or portion of any park may be declared closed by the Parks Director at any time, either temporarily or at regularly stated intervals, except for the Erickson Playfield and Skate Park. And that ordinance is problematic. I believe it to be the case that the city is relying upon that ordinance to have stated that the park is closed that day. And that ordinance is problematic, and it's problematic because it violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. As I said, parks are held in trust for the people, and they are traditional public forums, and that's a place where the public can go express themselves. And as you should be aware, restrictions on access to speech and association of public forums are subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. And it's well settled that giving a government official unbridled discretion to determine when that someone can be in a public forum violates the First Amendment. There's very clear case law on that by the United States Supreme Court. And I've put together just a short letter here outlining that, which I'll, I'll hand to the clerk, and maybe I will hand to the city attorney as well to take a look at. And my ask is that the city review that ordinance and strike the unconstitutional portions of the ordinance. And I appreciate the city taking a look in, a look at that and looking forward in that fashion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the council? There will be another public comment here than me here again, but there's someone now? All right, so we will move on then to late items. Are there any late items to add to the agenda?
I'd like to add a late item that came to my attention today, which is a supporting letter for House Bill 1406, which declared certain requirements for portable housing, and the deadline for that to date, which is why I'm asking to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Does the mayor suggest any consensus for to add that to the agenda?
I think there's, yeah, consensus to add that item to the agenda.
Do we have information on that?
All right, next question.
Well, I, I don't have any information, it's not in the agenda, and we need your explanation.
Is there any way we can get a copy of the, or the proposal? I have to agree, I'm vaguely familiar with it, but not enough to go with the length that you want to on it, so.
So, I do know that the AWC is asking for this, so it is better through them, but we need, do we have a consensus or, I guess, do we have the, I guess we should put it up to a vote to add it to this agenda?
I was just going to say, this is one of those issues that because of the way the legislature works, it's sitting, 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 and now it's like, this week we have to take action, and we didn't know, we didn't know, you know, you don't know when that's going to happen, so I'm aware of it, I have some questions about it, I'd be willing to talk about it, so I think it's worth putting it on just to have a conversation.
What was the number of that?
It's 1406.
1406. Can you give me 30 seconds, explanation, what we're all, what it is?
Yeah, I guess I'll just start, I mean, I think I'm failure in the council rules procedure, I mean, I'm discussing the way I'm, because of ours majority vote of the council to even put it on the agenda. But on that note, what this is, is it is, Task Bill 1406, it authorizes the government body of accounting authority to impose a local sales tax credited against the state's sales tax for portable or supportive housing. So it allows us an optional 0.01% or 0.02%, depending on what the county also takes advantage of the tax, that will be credited against the state's sales tax, so it's not an actual increase in the amount of sales tax. We use that for portable housing and other related portable housing needs. I'd say that this is one of the things that our consultant for housing assessment identified as an important thing for us to have, is a funding source for portable housing projects, and this is a bill promoted by both, thanks for pointing out, both Chapman and Behringer as House Bill, plus the two House members. This silent letter is already signed by Association of Washington City, by Association of Washington Heights, and by O.D.C. So our own local agents are there.
Thank you. So do you have consensus for this on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
No. Okay, so it looks like it is 5 to 2 to put it on the agenda, so how do you think? Or are there other considerations? Yeah, are there other considerations? So I have number three, and then, I know I've got one, I put it under dais, I got this letter in the mail, I guess, just, I guess yesterday, or I do, yesterday. The letter is for, asking for support for the letter of support for us, or a grant, they are going for a foundation grant, supporting, asking for help for supporting our basic operations. So do I have consensus for this on the agenda, other considerations?
Yes.
You have anything to talk about? Okay. Okay, so we got one though?
This is dated April 2nd, today's the 16th.
Right, so I'm, I'm just, I feel that we're just drawing things on the dais at the last
moment when we've agreed that's not how we operate, so that's my concern.
Do we, do we have consensus to discuss this, Emily?
No.
All right, so then it feels, four and three. All right, then the last thing we have.
Right, I'm sorry, point, point where four and three, you need four council members to put it on the agenda, right?
So four, I said, no.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So then, I guess.
The mayor's staff, staff was one lead item this evening, we apologize that it missed the packet, it was emailed out to the entire council on Friday afternoon. The item is to release a utility easement and accept a new utility easement, recognizing the first utility easement in a certain role place, historically, and we're simply correcting the error. Staff was asking about that, added to the consent of the evening.
All right, go ahead. Any steps for that, yes, yes? All right, so I see all six, so we got seven, seven items left. All right, so we will move forward.
And it's not really lead item, but now seems like the board would have to discuss it. I'd like to move to discuss that of G, the 2019 budget amendment, to discuss it after item I1, the current class of the, of the decision.
Okay, so moving the words that I'm trying, all right? So moving that adjustment for the agenda, discussion. All right, so let me begin by reading the consent agenda. Was there anybody yet who had the need to report?
I'm going to go out of the board of the 2019 Arrow Mountain Project.
All right, so consent agenda, so the city council minutes of April 2nd, 2019, expenditure in order for March 23, 2019 to April 5th, 2019, the amount of $1,251,495. Line permission appointments, the 2019 NPS wastewater alcohol discussion professional service agreement with Berber, APAM, Birdie Project PSA-2, 2019-13, Port Angeles Harbor mediation agreement, and then the release of the utility easement and acceptance of the utility easement outside of the land.
I move the consent agenda as well.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I would like to thank the group of council members that reviewed my initial appointments, and looking at those applications, that seemed like that was a difficult job, there's many applying applicants, and I was encouraged that, you know, hopefully those applicants will read my features, mark positions available. So thank you, that's, that's a more difficult job.
All right, any further discussion? So we've got a motion and a statement, so all those who pay the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? As we can miss. So item number four is 2019 Arrow Mountain Project SC-2019-03.
Yeah, I pulled this idea, I apologize for making this on this, but the thing I had to give you today was realizing that the National Market Service and the Air Force Association have been doing arrow mapping, high resolution, orbit photography of the Elba River, starting in parting with Wright Brothers, so a local company with an airplane based here in Port Angeles, that they're doing, you know, some of this work already, it's been only a while, they continued it last year, and I just would like to hear a chance to see if it's possible for us to work with a little company in this. Also, I'm noting that the, you know, our estimate is going $40,000 to this work, and we're basically doubling that in order to have somebody come up here from Oregon to do that work. So what I'd like to do is just continue this toward next meeting, and see if there's a possibility to work with Wright Brothers with their own photography project that, and you're shooting at their coordinate, your answer coordinate.
Madam Mayor? I would like to hear from Mr. Ferg regarding this.
Yeah, so I could be a quick, little, just not discussed in place. We pulled, this is a professional services agreement of the, we moved our MRSC roster, which is standard for something like this, right, or those assets we're taking back in 2012, so the time is due to have, we had, and it's used for building crystal and water, and we use great toilets and so forth. We looked at, I believe it was a number of different companies off the MRSC roster, and based on qualifications, we just selected the GeoTerror one out of Eugene, Oregon. And that was based on the, 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 and the staff's qualifications there. I'm not sure if that company was on our MRSC roster.
Um, and that was based on the, 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 and the staff's qualifications there. I'm not sure if that company was on our M R S C roster, how that took place, but this is the one of these houses most qualified for the work. In regards to timing on this, we'd like to get this accomplished as soon as possible because we like it done before it leaves. Our foliage takes place on trees. Um, so time is of essence on this one here, and then they can vacuum all and do the second portion of the city. That's why the urgency begins to create this council meeting.
Yeah, if there's a way to approve this contract, consider the bottom no opportunity to work with, with Wright Brothers and orbit photography. That'll just take a day to figure out, and I can't imagine that that's gonna cost us eight, five thousand. So that's why I, I'd like to enter in that. If this way not happened a few weeks away, totally happy to do that and approve the contract for GeoTerra, consider the bottom no option to work with Wright Brothers. If that's, if that's possible.
Um, is, is that a possibility, Eugene?
So, cancel it. It is a possibility to do, however, we probably wouldn't recommend it considering the work that already went into, um, contracting this item with another contractor that has expectations relative to that professional services agreement. Um, obviously, staff has, uh, gone through a detailed analysis trying to determine the most qualified firm that's registered on our M R S C, uh, register and gone with that most qualified firm. Um, at this time, we probably wouldn't recommend that, that method, however, um, it's the verbiage of council to tell us otherwise.
So, Madam Mayor, do we have, I'm sorry, I've spoken.
Okay.
Uh, just question, is Wright Brothers' evaluation not on, on our list?
I don't think so. For your emergency, they're on the emergency roster. Now, we do, we always look at, uh, for professional services and contracts, we always look at, uh, locals for that. So I'm not sure if they were evaluated or not this time. Um, this, this evaluation had taken place over, I mean, months ago, and this was drawn up for a while because of the budget situation there. I mean, regards to forty thousand dollars back in the street budget when we're looking into this, we knew that was gonna cost, um, eighty five thousand dollars, I understand. They put forty thousand in the budget with placeholders in there, uh, with zero dollar marks, and wastewater water and operations budget for negotiation purposes. I believe back in two thousand twelve, they came in approximately around seventy eight, eighty thousand dollars as well. So there was no surprise in regards to the budgeting to it. Um, I think the funding source was one of the, one of the points that I continued to analyze, how do you fund it? Um, and that's, that was discussed at that time.
Okay, so.
I, I appreciate that answer. Well, thank you. I mean, for me, I had, I had a hundred thousand, and it looks like we budgeted forty thousand and now we're spending eighty five thousand. So with that in mind, it must be option of, I'm sure, working with local company, um, that is already doing these flights, so I have a project that's not gonna have to fly for it. And, um, and a project that looks to me, um, council act it has been twice expensive as what we planned for, that, um, I'm gonna try to just imply, so apologies. I move to approve and authorize city manager's Lord and Science Service contract, which you, I incorporate for Arrow Mountain, which I remember S C C two thousand, twenty nineteen dash three, for a maximum amount of, I'd say, seventy thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars, uh, after, uh, after three days for, um, confirmation that Wright Brothers is not able to do similar work.
All right, so we got a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Sure, go ahead and say it.
Thank you. Uh, comments, yes?
I think this is a perfect example how not to be efficient in the city of Port Angeles. Um, this is something, we have a council meeting tonight and we have agenda. This has been worked on for months, and staff has worked on this for months. Council members, um, I think it's always good if we have questions that we take them to staff ahead of council meetings and get our questions answered because, um, just to tear apart, um, our service contract at the last minute, um, without any further consultation, oh, with staff, just to throw this out at the council meeting, I think. What this does is disrupts staff and is, um, really not efficient to us as council because we don't have all the information that's been brought up tonight. So I'm gonna vote against this simply because I don't think this is how we should conduct, um, our council business. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can vote in support of this either. I would like to see in the future that we do contact Wright Brothers about bidding on this. But as of right now, it's slippery slope to turn around when this company is essentially set and ready to go and prepare to do this and then turn around and tell them, yeah, no, I'm sorry. So I realize going local, shopping local, whether we should have or should not have shopped local to begin with, uh, leave that up to staff. But I'm not gonna support, I will support it as is, not miss the motion with it.
Okay, any further comments?
Um, so the question, you know, going to the art of queue process, is there any expectation or is there any legal liability if we do not sign a contract with this company? Like, I, like, do they have an expectation that we should sign a contract?
It's hard, I know, it's hard, I know, this is going through the normal process, and the normal process is that every contract must be approved by the city councils on the level of the city council.
Any further comments? So, um, I'm just seeing that from the council. I'd like to check in a minute. Um, so the motion states that we are going to sign this. And with the exception of, you know, as soon as given the phase to just speak with Wright Brothers to see if they are on the list. But without any expectation that we will be going with Wright Brothers, just time, right?
That's what I intended with the motion, is that we're doing this, but waiting three days, and Wright Brothers says, yeah, no, the ortho, the project that we're doing, uh, wouldn't be able to work for this. Or sorry, we have a lot of flights, we don't have time for any more of it, it just wouldn't work, then we recruit this contract. Uh, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. I had this with the council act this morning. I didn't have time to contact Andy Rashid or Wright Brothers today, due to my book schedule. So, um, yes, council member did his right that we should bring this up earlier. I also think that content issue, no expectation, but the city houses are understanding.
And so, um, so maybe I kind of, one of those partly adds to our package. I know I've asked often that we actually get a little more time for our packets because sometimes life gets in the way and you do not get your packet until that morning. And, um, and I don't think that it's that much of an issue to give us a couple more days to be able to get some more time. So I know this is something that, you know, the last six, seven years, it's, I could kind of push to see if we can get a little more time just to get council members a little more of the right in this. But as to this motion, um, I, um, I appreciate the fact that, um, we could ask a local, um, agency to see whether they could do this. Now, as to whether they, we will grant the, the contract, I think is a little bit different because, you know, I understand that, uh, to get them, they may take longer. So I would say that the motion as it stands is that we will approve this contract, but will wait three days until we speak to Wright Brothers to see whether they think, whether they would. And I guess I'm looking at it for the future, whether in the future they would be able to do this job, um, whether they could do this one right now. If the answer is that yes, if you do it, then, um, then I feel like we've pushed that a little bit of a month. But, um, but it's, I think, important that our local, um, companies get the local jobs. So from that standpoint, I, you know, I totally support this. So I'm, so I'm sorry to be thinking out loud, but it's, it's where, it's part of this trying to decide. I think it is a good idea to have our local businesses, but if they're not on the, on our state list, there's no way for our state to know that. So I guess the first thing is, were they on the list or not? If they weren't on the list, then, um, then why, you know, I guess, how did they drop off the list?
So, if it's okay, I just wanna hang on to that, in that some of the people of the public might not understand that there are two different processes. A lot of times when we refer to contracts, it's that we put a contract out to bid, and by state law, we're required to take a lowest bidder. This is not that type of contract. This is the refresher qualifications in which we ask for qualifications and then do a negotiation with that company. And so, you know, when we have to take a lowest bidder, we can't choose a local place all the time. Sometimes the lowest bidder is just from out of state or out of the area, and we're, by state law, we're gonna choose them. So it does seem like when that's not the case, we should be trying to use local expertise and, and, you know, local jobs and, and put that money back in our community when we can. Um, I, I think this is probably an honest mistake where it just, you know, I didn't know that this was something Wright Brothers could do, and, and very well can be that they don't necessarily do this exact thing. So I don't fault anyone for not thinking of them. Um, but I do think that, you know, it does, you know, it, s- staff operates from knowing what we think as a council. And if we as a council say we want local businesses to be getting contracts when it's, when it's appropriate and available and it doesn't cost us, you know, a whole, you know, load of extra money, that tells staff what we think. And I think that's instructive for us to do that when it's possible. So, you know, this project most likely will not go to Wright Brothers. I think that's going to be the likely outcome, that there's not gonna be enough time to, you know, do that negotiation, put a contract together, get that stuff before. But I do support that motion because I do think it's important to send that message to staff to say, you know, when it's appropriate, when you have that ability, when it's not a lowest bidder requirement, we should try to put the money back in our own community.
Madam Mayor and Council, I very much appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this. I think, um, it's really important not to assume that anyone's made a mistake in this situation. I think, um, one thing, with this question came to us after staff had left for the day. We haven't been able to ask staff, you know, who's involved in the M R S C register. And I think it's really important that we look at those factors before we assume anything. Uh, but I will tell you that council has already asserted local policies that ensure we are always looking to go with a local contractor first, and I would challenge anyone to take a look at the history of our local choices. And I think consistently, you will find that when we have the ability, not through the bid process, which we don't have that ability, but through a professional services agreement, to choose local first, we do. And we're always looking for those opportunities, and I wanna stress that. Um, I will tell you, we're more than happy, no matter what the outcome would be to this motion, uh, or where we end up with another motion today, whatever that outcome is, we're more than happy to reach out to Wright Brothers. They're this local business that we care about, that we have a relationship with. And certainly, we will check with them, ensure that for whatever services they do provide, we'll encourage them to be on the M R S C register so that for those services, we can select them in the future. Um, in addition to that, um, I just would like clarification relative to the motion that if we find that Wright Brothers in fact is able to do it, then we would also have the authorization to move forward with Wright Brothers if that's council's preference.
So let's clarify the motion.
I have a motion to add and approve the contractor, Wright Brothers. Should be passed there? If approved.
So I, go ahead. So we got a motion on the table. Um, do you accept the amendment to the motion? Because we got a second on this. So just saying that if, to accept that this recommendation is this, and should Wright Brothers be able to do it as a local contractor that, um, the staff is able to sign the contract with?
Let me, uh, let me go this through, uh, whereas I appreciate, uh, uh, the, the, the timing of this or the time factor involved here. And so, uh, what I would propose really, uh, let, let staff work with them, and if it, if it does turn out to be, uh, such that Wright Brothers can do it, then, uh, then bring us back a, a, a new, um, um, offer, if you will, for lack of a better term. So, um, I, I would, I would offer a friendly amendment in this fashion, okay? So this is what should be going on first, as opposed to just amending Lindsey's, uh, I would offer a friendly amendment to Lindsey's, uh, um, uh, uh, motion. And the friendly amendment would be this way. First of all, I would draw up the three day timeframe. I would add the provision that if in fact Wright Brothers can't do this, uh, between now and, let me, you say it, between now and the next council meeting, if in fact Wright Brothers can do this, uh, this, uh, work at the, at the amount of, uh, suggested in this memo, then we, then we bring it, staff brings that back to council in the next meeting, and we vote on it then. My amendment simply would say, uh, that I would take the, the three days off. Use, if, if during the period between now and the next, uh, council meeting, staff does some additional research and finds out that, that Wright Brothers cannot do it, then we've, we've approved the contract and we move forward. If they find out that Wright Brothers can do it, okay? Then they would, uh, bring us back. And then, so, uh, what, what I, my friendly amendment really is, I'm sorry, James, but I'm gonna table this. Ask, request for, uh, tabling this until the next meeting.
Okay, so there's a question, do you want to, for that, should we have further discussion or do we have, we have a motion on the table right now?
I'd like to clarify a point. Do you mean tabling, like, just across the board, or are you saying, I just wanna restate what I hear you saying?
Okay.
Which may be irrelevant if Lindsey's not gonna do that.
I was just trying to make a point of order. That motion on the table is decided and had a big, I don't have a motion.
Right, so we have a motion on the table right now.
Right.
And, and I know you're trying to amend this and to take it by the.
I'm, I'm offering a friendly amendment to it. So tabling is not appropriate, that action, okay?
Okay, so not tabling.
So, uh, so I'm not, I'm not tabling the, the amendment. What I would like to do is, rather than get us into bind, give us this three day period again, I'm thinking out loud. But, uh, if, rather than giving us this three days, and then if you don't have three days, you find out, oh, yeah, Wright Brothers can do it, so we've approved this contract. What I'm saying is eliminate the three days, okay? And not get us into a, a situation where if they, if they can approve it, uh, uh, we, we're, now we're scrambling. Let's approve it, okay? Take the three days off. Let me summarize. My friendly amendment, Lindsey, is to amend your, uh, your motion to eliminate the three day time period. Go ahead and approve this, uh, as recommended by staff, okay? In the future, the research should be done, and if Wright Brothers is qualified, give them the contract in the future. But right now, we're, we're gonna get ourselves in some sort of a pickle if we, if we, uh, we try to put three days and then we find out this, that, and other thing happens. Let's, let's, the staff work, uh, take its course. Uh, again, there's a clear message that local comes first. So to clarify, my friendly amendment is to remove the three day, uh, criterion from Lindsey's amendment. Vote on that. If that passes, then we vote on the, the amendment as, the motion as amended. I know that's a square as much, but that's what I'm saying.
All right, so we have a motion on the table that says that we are going to approve, uh, the recommendation, uh, to sign this contract with GeoTerra. And, um, but before we, this, the contract is signed, we will do research to see whether Wright Brothers.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, so.
If, if I understand what you're saying, Councilor Moran, it's, I think you're, you're interested in doing the market conditions in the council pack.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, uh, my friendly amendment is to, because the way Lindsey rushed to read it, he, he read the recommendation as stated in the council packet. He added the additional three days to that. My friendly amendment is to remove those three day criteria from the, the recommendation and approve this as stated with the idea that in the future, you know, uh, if they're not on the, the, the M R S C roster or whatever, they get put on, and in the future, they can, they can, uh, have first crack at it. But right now, I think we're gonna get ourselves into a little bit of a pickle if we, we, we put the three days on here. So my friendly amendment, Kate, is simply to remove the three-day criteria and approve that.
So point of order. There's a motion on the table, there's amendments to motion. Are you withdrawing your second or are you accepting the amendments to motion? It sounds like you're withdrawing your second, is that correct? Just to, just to move this a little.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so now.
So we have a motion on the table for Lindsay.
Second.
Okay.
Now we can discuss that motion, correct?
No, because I made a friendly amendment to it.
Right, but he, but he did, the question is, so the first, the first motion was made.
Yeah.
You said it. He went ahead and modified that first motion. He modified it because he wanted to modify it by, um, remember the modifications.
Yeah, it's still allowed. The modification was if it turns out that Wright Brothers can do it, that we in this motion allow staff to sign a contract with Wright Brothers. And so, we, what we need is from Jim, who was the second on the first motion, to say, yes, I'm okay with that. And if you're not, then you're withdrawing your second of the motion altogether, I think.
Okay.
Right, so do you, uh, do you accept that amendment or do you withdraw your second?
Me, okay, um, I withdraw my second.
And then I second the motion.
Alright, so. So now we have a second, the two, as amended.
And I would request, um, that we amend the motion to include that, you know, we will allow the staff to sign the amendment if Wright Brothers, if they can do work within the budget amount.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a motion on the table. And it's, um, it's been amended and it's been, uh, uh, accepted with amendments that, um, staff can sign the, the, um, the contract with Wright Brothers as, so that it meets the right amount of the budget amount. Alright, so.
Thank you for the motion.
So now you speak to the motion and then.
Okay, so I just wanted to say I appreciate the city council's comments. I hope I didn't insinuate any staff or any mistake because I totally agree that that does not seem to be what happened. Um, and I appreciate your recounting of, you know, how the city council has included and, and city staff have included that shop local kind of ethos into our administration, into our organization.
I just point a clarification. The overall budget for this service is eighty-five thousand dollars. This contract is not to exceed seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So if we approve it as written, nothing changes. So why are we making an amendment to approve it as written? I mean, it's within the budget, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty is within the budget. So why are we making a motion to put it within the budget when it stated that it is?
Because it's going with the new company.
If it goes with the new company.
If it goes with the new company, that's, it's staying within that budget.
Okay, I honestly think this is the most inefficient way to do business I've experienced. And the reason is that when a council member picks up their packet the day of council and asks a question after staff has gone home, I think those questions, um, not only have, do they need to be asked before council meeting, but it's, we, staffs, how much money and time has staff done to prepare this work for us? This has been one month for months. And all of a sudden, we, um, we're just going to try to undo the work and, and throw in something new at the last minute. This is very efficient to how staff works, how council works. And for years, um, choosing local, shop local was, uh, out of PA Forward Committee, we did shop local over town, so staff understands that. They're doing a good job for us. But we need to bring up these questions earlier so we're not wasting weeks and months of staff time, please council. Let's, let's approve this. And then if you have suggestions, then moving forward, let's take those suggestions moving forward. But to, to tear apart these months of work and time and effort on staff is really not in the best interest of council, staff, or the citizens. So I don't support it, thank you.
Just in a sense, it's personal, how does a council member have brought this up Friday morning? Which would win the first of all, or did it come to bring this up? It was still in the same, uh, same time that we were coming to it, that's been about today, thank you.
And, and I would like to add that, you know, sometimes we do our darnedest thing with council packets, right? And sometimes they don't happen until we get the rights set, we have Friday. If you're going out of town Saturday and Sunday and you have early, then it's just, um, I think we all try our darnedest people to do that, but, um, um, going back to, um, the Geoterra. And my, my guess is that Wright Brothers are, um, may not be able to do this because most of this data gets scanned, it gets georeferenced. I mean, it, it becomes, um, it doesn't really, there's a lot of technical work that goes to it and there, there's different layers, because it goes right into the GIS. So, um, and I know that from having purchased, purchased a lot of this type of data, it used to be old satellite data that we used to always do it because it's georeferenced and corrected to the right, um, markers and one key for this. And then you have layers of previous old data that you can compare and it's made in similar layers. So, but nonetheless, I think just even just asking a question of whether Wright Brothers can do it or not would be worthwhile.
I'd like to add a couple things for a little bit. So first, I, for local businesses and using local, uh, for contractors for one, and also professional services consultants, we prefer to do that. As I said, that's something we've shown in the past. We, we, we take, um, we have a very good relationship with local consultants in regards to that. I'd be surprised if we didn't consult with them or at least reach out to them if they were a known local agency that could meet those expectations and perform the work. So we've done this before. Um, I'm not sure the process, we obviously went through the process. This is, just to give you a little bit of history on this, this goes back to, um, at least eight months. I mean, I was not tied into this, this was with our former local city engineer and one of our staff members that went through this, um, social process. So, um, we can go back to the file and see what the place there, it was put on hold for a while due to the budget and that was why it's being, being brought forth tonight. And it was being brought forth tonight in this manner because we want to get the project completed because it's a priority for all that works as well as for the city because many staff use these local quotas, um, for building, for water, for utilities and so forth. So that's the purpose of it. So there is some time constraints to it and, um, as one of the staff definitely understands the importance of using local consultants in regards to work on these projects. So we appreciate that, that we're sure for you guys to be sure that we're doing the right thing. But we're on the same page in regards to that, so.
And we do want to thank you for that. But you also have to remember that this is the very first time that council gets to see this. And although staff might have spent months and months on it, truthfully, this is the first time we see it. And so, when we don't have that time of review that you, you know, whether you guys work a month or two or six months or, uh, we may not be aware that that is what's happening behind this, this packet. So, um, so we appreciate that. But like I said, know that this, when we get a packet, this is new information for us. So, um, alright, council, we have a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further discussion before we go to the room?
See, uh, you, could you clarify that motion now? Here's our three-day limit in this motion. You know, okay, thank you.
So the, so the motion is that, um, it, uh, we approve and authorize, uh, the C I just signed for this project with Geoterra. But should Wright Brothers be able to do it, that the staff has the right to go ahead and contract with them for the same amount.
For the budget.
For the budget amount.
And, uh, Mayor and Council, if I can just clarify, then we will also be looking for the same specifications as the qualifications for Wright Brothers to jump.
Yes.
Can I ask, uh, this feels a little bit like it's an elites, but I feel like it will impact how I vote. So I would like just a quick clarification. If we are bound by the MRSC list or if that's just a good resource to get qualifying people? And if that's just the procedure and the policy, that's okay, I'm just, I want to understand if there's some kind of requirement for that or if it's just a good way to get qualified contractors?
So it's a, it's a good way to get qualified consultants, um, or contractors, depending on the, the-
Yeah, consultants, right.
Yeah, uh, you can get contracted to a minimum price and, uh, the prices on that, the, the budget. But, um, we also can go up to R Qs, so we can publicize it and advertise it and R Qs can maybe review those in the same, same process. This is a nice, quick way of going through and we can call consultants also. Local learns to do this every year, make sure they're on the list. And we have a contract specialist that walks into the process and helps them get signed up for. So if, uh, a, a project comes up where we need a consultant, we can go around and make sure all the local consultants are on that list and we can review them and select them at that time, if that's, if that's what we choose to do.
Right, so my concern with the motion as it's stated, um, is if it turns out that the group that is doing this, because I'm assuming Wright Brothers is keeping somebody up who's doing the imaging, um, if they were, if it turns out they're on it, on the list, then staff has determined that Geoterra is more qual, meets the qualifications better. Um, and so I don't want to walk us into choosing a less qualified consultant being taken up because Wright Brothers can take them up and they aren't even there applied.
And actually, that was a clarification from, um, Manager West that they will, they will need the same qualification, so they will not get local qualifications.
My understanding of motion is this is actually a staff discretion, that we are authorizing this contract and if staff want to contract with Wright Brothers instead for the budget amount they're allowed.
Thank you.
Alright, folks, we got a motion on the table and a second. And they, we're done with discussion? Okay, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those who favor, say no?
No.
Okay, so we get two ayes. Which are you? Excuse me, or the, who knows? Alright, thank you, council. Alright, we are on to aye, other considerations, so we'll come back to the question. So the first one is, uh, code compliance and loading the, the resolution, so motion for here discussion. So, uh, who's going to be taking that one?
Madam Mayor and Council, attorney more is the one could be presenting the items tonight. Just give us a few minutes to set up, please.
Sure.
Can I just make a comment all the way? Um, I know that sometimes the procedural stuff is frustrating, but I also think it's kind of nice when we have those procedural questions because it's good practice for just kind of a, like a little drawl of words for, wait, what order do things have to happen? Because it is a little messy sometimes, so I appreciate everyone's patience with us working through that.
And, uh, so in the past, we've had two presentations regarding, uh, potential code compliance program. Uh, one was a very broad overview on, uh, February twenty-sixth. Then last one was, uh, a little bit more focused, uh, on, uh, the council meeting on March nineteenth. At that council meeting, uh, a majority of you directed staff to come back at this meeting with some additional information. And the additional information we're presenting tonight, um, has to do with the scope of the enforcement program, the proposed process, that is the procedure, and then also an opportunity to, um, take further action with regard to the levy, the levy. And so I'll make a short presentation on, uh, each one of those topics, uh, tonight. Okay, so the first one is the scope of the code enforcement program that we're presenting. So, uh, staff has compiled a, uh, proposed program to, uh, replace the kind of hazard program we have right now. As we have proposed it, the scope of this program is pretty broad. It would cover nuisances, land use, zoning, junk vehicles, uh, animals livestock, um, the traffic safety camera, uh, program. And there's a few other miscellaneous, uh, city code provisions that would also be involved. And this is the staff, the staff recommendation is that we actually cover the full gamut of all of these things. It doesn't have to be that way. It can be much narrower and that's up to you. And so this is one of the items for discussion for tonight. Uh, is what is, what is the scope, what should be the scope of the program? Again, that's up to you. What I would suggest is that we go through this presentation and cover all three of these before you begin discussing any one of them. Because what you decide on, one, may have an, an effect on the other. Also, I'd point out that with regard to this, then, if we do it this way, this is going to involve a number of departments of the city. So the, the range of topics covered in this, uh, proposal is pretty broad. It would involve the, uh, of course, obviously, the legal department, it would involve the police department, it would involve community and acting on the phone, the fire department, uh, and everything involves my industry, that's important. So, uh, in this program would involve several different departments of the city. Now, the process for, uh, the code enforcement program that we would be following, if you tell us to go ahead, go ahead with this, uh, involves several steps. First would be revisions to the city code. This is the, the one that would require the most time and the most effort. There are, uh, many chapters of the code that would have to be revised in order to, uh, meet our vision for a comprehensive and more efficient code. We would, uh, place all the civil and criminal penalties into a single code provision that will allow for easy reference and later amendment. Uh, we would revise the language of the district code, building code, zoning, land use and the other codes to standardize them and to harmonize them. And we would amend the civil and criminal penalties. The purpose of this would be to encourage voluntary compliance, but at the same time, it would give us effective and efficient tools to compel compliance if we needed. So those would be the code provisions. But in addition to that, we intend to create a list of services. Uh, we have had experience within the last couple of years where we've been able to enlist community services to help people come into compliance. Might have an individual who on his own is not able to bring a property into compliance. We've actually had experience where we have, uh, through the use of community volunteers and other services, have been able to help. We want to make a comprehensive list of all of those and incorporate that into our code compliance program. In the police department, the proposal is to hire two new positions. Both of them would be part-time. Both of them would be code enforcement officers dedicated to that purpose. They can be part-time because if we have two part-time, then one of them can be covering hours that the other ones off. And that is a better, we think that's a better use of the, uh, FTEs rather than hiring one. Supervision will be provided by the existing staff in the police department. And we will also need some tools to provide these services, vehicles, radios, things like that. And I think the police department, again, has, uh, previously stepped up and have those things covered. Finally, we will want a citywide process, a citywide procedure, much the same as we have a citywide process for responding to record requests. As all departments are involved in record requests, many of the city departments would be involved in a new code compliance program. We would have a, a uniform procedure process that all departments would recognize and would, uh, hopefully make the overall process more efficient. That process would include a single system for receiving complaints. Uh, there would be a uniform complaint form. It would be as is now, however, it would still be driven by complaints. As I mentioned before, several departments would be involved. Police, legal, uh, community economic development, and fire would be the primary departments. We have, we have been receiving citizen complaints, so we have a backlog of them. If we implement this new code compliance, uh, program, one of the first things we would do would be to evaluate those complaints, prioritize them, and then deal with them in accordance with our new program. The workflow would be standardized so that instead of thinking about each complaint separately and individually, we would have a process that flows through regularly for each complaint. Complaint arrives, it would be assigned to an officer to investigate. The officer would contact the owner of the occupant, explain the violation, try to obtain voluntary compliance. Uh, if voluntary compliance wasn't obtainable, uh, then we'd go through the notification process and then follow that up with a procedure which goes initially to the security examiner. There's an opportunity for review, uh, and then every step of the way. Uh, the goal is not to find somebody, not to penalize somebody, but to obtain compliance. And only if we go through this whole process and cannot obtain compliance, only then would we go to court. So that is a real quick, quick review of what we are proposing with the scope of the program and then an overview of the program as we would implement it. And as you can see, implementing the program involves a fair amount of work. Uh, but that's, that's what we're proposing to the council if you continue down this road. Now, the last element for tonight is to consider a levy lift. The process that I have just described to you, we have estimated to cost about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And as you know, that, that is money that comes out of the general fund. The general fund is not real flush with money right now. Uh, so there is a, a real need, if we're going to have a improved code compliance program, there's a need for additional funds in the general fund. One certain way to obtain additional money is through a levy lift. And at the last meeting, when we talked about this subject, a majority of the council, uh, wanted a public hearing, uh, before approving a levy lift. And tonight, uh, you have in your packet a resolution that would set a public hearing for the next council meeting, um, to consider a levy lift. So if, uh, I guess the issue for tonight is do you want to go ahead with that? The, uh, considerations, and this is a slide from the February presentation we went through. Pretty much nothing has changed here. Uh, levy lift would increase, what we're proposing is a three percent increase. That would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. That would amount to an average increase of twelve dollars per year per household. And the, at this point in time, we would actually be shooting for the November 5th election. We're getting pretty short on time to be doing anything, um, at the primary election. Now, in considering whether to go ahead with the public hearing, uh, there are several things that we might offer for your consideration. First of all, levy lift lifts are successful. Seventy-five percent in Washington State of levy lift lifts have been approved. So they can be successful. And it is a sure way to raise a pretty predictable amount of money. On the other hand, the ones that have been successful all have three characteristics in common. One is that the purpose is something that the community supports. Uh, and so you need to ask yourself, is this a purpose that the community supports? Is it a purpose that the council supports? Is the, uh, excuse me. Is the community, the, the community itself, uh, willing to accept a tax increase, impose a tax increase on itself? And I don't know, again, that would be something the council could measure much better than I can. And finally, uh, is there support for it? And that's particularly true, is there support in the council board? Generally, um, if the community doesn't support a levy lift, it will fail. If it doesn't, if the community doesn't mark the purpose, it will fail. And generally, if the council isn't fully in support of it, it will fail. Those are, one of the three criteria is why, why we have, why we see other communities having problems with levy lift lifts. On the other hand, if all three of those are positive, then you have a pretty good chance of doing a levy lift. Now, consider also, though, that the effort to formulate a public hearing is a great. Uh, there's a lot of staff work in, in bringing a public hearing to a council meeting. Uh, a lot of staff hours involved in that. And so if you, uh, are, have any hesitation about that, what we would suggest is instead of doing a, or we would offer for you to at least think about it. Instead of going to the effort and taking up the time to do a public hearing on this where, uh, where there's any question about viability of it, is instead of doing that, send staff out to find perhaps other means to raise revenue. So, those are just some things for you to, uh, consider in terms of whether you want to go ahead with that, hey, public hearing with levy lift. If we go forward from here, the next steps in the next month or two would be to actually come back to you with revised code provisions, some revisions, and also some new code provisions. And then come back to you also with an amendment to the city budget. So those would be kind of the next steps following through. We've been trying to take this one step at a time so you could, that you can have control over each of these processes as you go forward. So that's just a heads up about what will be next. And that's it for the presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, um, I can answer to Nathan, uh, David, uh, Brian. We can try and answer your questions for you.
Great, thank you.
Attorney Lord, would you go back to the previous slide, please? And my question is if, if we decided not to go forward with the levy lift, which of those next steps would still happen or would none of them happen?
Well, so there's, uh, we're hoping you would talk about three items tonight. One is do you want to go ahead with the implementation of this program? And if so, uh, then how do you want to fund it? We, if you decide that you will want to go ahead with the program, we would probably start identifying the code limits. And do that while we were still in the process of finding other means of funding it.
All right, and so any, um, more questions, gentlemen? Any questions?
I, I don't, I don't have a question per se, but I would like to open the discussion on the levy lift, please.
All right, um, so I guess, uh, because we know, however, you guys want to, so go ahead and start that, um, and then I just let you. So go ahead and.
Okay, um, I, uh, remember the three criteria that, uh, Attorney Lord pointed out about the, the potential for success of levy lifts. And I'm going to start out by saying I don't think the property tax levy lift is necessary. Uh, and I'm going to give you a list of reasons why. And, uh, and, but I, I'm not opposed, I want you to understand, I'm not opposed to moving ahead with the, uh, the code revision. I would like to see alternative funding mechanisms, but I'm going to address specifically the levy lift lift and why I, I don't think it's, uh, a necessary and just basically not a good idea. Couple, uh, my, I'm going to start my, my, uh, discussion basically on, there are, uh, have been identified potential savings and systems that the city uses. And so there's a, a way of beginning the funding of any particular, uh, uh, code enforcement program. But let me point out a cou- a couple of things. First of all, we have a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars of new construction going into Fort Angeles. That includes the Boys and Girls Club, the pool, the Elwah Hotel, the Performing Arts Center, and the Park Project. Just a quick, uh, thumbnail, uh, arithmetic calculation on the potential sales tax revenue that, that would generate. It could be anywhere from eight hundred thousand to one point two million dollars over the next several years. Uh, so there is the opportunity for future funds that will become available. The development of our, uh, code compliance program has basically already started. Um, the, uh, and I want to also let you know that I attended the, uh, the joint, uh, meeting between the county commissioners and the port commissioners yesterday, and there was a wonderful presentation by the EDC director on the opportunity zones and what, uh, what's happening as a result of this development downtown. It's a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars worth of future development, and which will be happening in the next, uh, three to five years at least. Uh, it's attracting interest now in the economic, uh, uh, and we'll see those opportunity zone. There have been people coming forward, seeing these developments taking place that now feel comfortable that they will get an adequate rate of return on their investment dollars in the opportunity zone. So we're already seeing an interest in future economic benefits as a result of this. Again, bringing in more tax dollars as a result of that. Good example that they gave is the port of Seattle that, uh, built a cruise terminal and, uh, in, in a, uh, rundown section of town. And that is also attracting a great deal of interest from an opportunity zone standpoint. So, uh, the, the long-term economic benefit through the economic, uh, uh, opportunity zone is something that will give us additional funds down the road. Uh, we're incrementally, uh, beginning to install a, a code program in the sense that the city is, is, uh, trying to, where they can, uh, take, uh, vehicles that have been, there have been neighborhood complaints about and take them away in total way and, and take them to, uh, scrap yards, if you will. And so that's the beginning of the, uh, in my, uh, my opinion, that's the beginning of a code compliance program. Uh, and so I would suggest that we begin the process of, of the, uh, the code compliance program, and as money, uh, comes in, we add robustness to the program. Uh, it's been demonstrated many times over in cities that have a robust, uh, uh, code compliance program that eventually becomes self-sustaining. I know the philosophy is to get voluntary compliance, but that doesn't always work. And so where cities are actively involved in, in, uh, uh, pursuing this program, they eventually become self-sustaining. And finally, there is one thing that, uh, concerns me the most and that by putting this on the ballot in November, we are seriously jeopardizing any opportunity that the school district has for, for putting a levy on, on the ballot. Uh, I would have you to guess that the, uh, the potential for, uh, successful passage of both the school levy and this, uh, either in November and the school district is possibly looking for, uh, to put it on the ballot in February, is, is very slim. So what we're basically doing is making the decision that we are going to gamble with the money for, for the kids in schools or we're going to put this code compliance program ahead of that. And, and I think that's a, a mistake and it's a bad message to send right now. So bottom line is we can incrementally, uh, uh, implement this program. Some of the things that, uh, Attorney Lord has pointed out, we can move forward with. But as a funding mechanism, the, the levy lift system is not necessary and it is a bad time to put it in place. So based on those points, I make a motion to remove the property tax levy lift increase on consideration.
Second, that motion. All right, um, Mike, did you want to make any comments?
So, I think we all understand the need for this compliance program, and the community's asked for this. And I by no means wish to discourage staff. I'm looking from other, looking for other sources to fund this. The levy lift lift, I will not support without an end date to start with. This council, our mayor in general, has asked for a lot of measurables to be able to see how are we doing. Well, I'd certainly like to think that after X number of times, we would be able to see how we're doing. And if we're doing a poor job of that, or it's not working out the way those who voted wished it would, that they have the opportunity to opt out of that. And the, the issue with the schools, okay, we haven't passed, we've had construction bonds fail. We, they've tried to go at it a different way and do a levy, and that has failed. And putting both of these up against each other, I, I do agree with Council Mayor Moran. It's, it's not a matter of choosing one or the other. It's a matter of overwhelming to the voters, looking at dollars, dollars, dollars. And whether it's twelve dollars or twenty dollars, that's relative to the one that you live in. And it's a common denominator that has been mentioned before, that comes over and over again. What it comes down to is quality of life for people. What are we going to do as a council to provide that quality of life? And will that program support itself? I have concerns on the program supporting itself based on the presentation as exact, as to how aggressive we're going to get. How many freebies do you get? How long does it go on for? And I realize as a council, that's something we're going to have to decide. And I realize as a council, that's something we're going to have to decide some of that. But to support this levy lift lift at all, it has to have an end date or it won't have my vote at all. And I would like to think that the citizens of our city are, should be involved in the process of deciding whether or not they want this program. And voters should decide this. But I'm not, I can't in good conscience support moving forward at all without, without an out on this. Because if I am correct, or if you don't put an end date, it does go forever. Thank you, Mr. Lord.
Anybody else who would like to speak on this?
So I have some questions just about the presentations. Okay, I just have a question about how to take my turn speaking. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, what the scope and process is. Has staff put any time or thought into thinking about what a more limited process or scope would look like? Or is that something that you're just asking for council directional?
At this time, we don't have a more limited process layout. I wouldn't take long to come up with that if that's something else I desire. Our tradition, we just take a look at a list that was provided in a prior slide and let us know what you don't see as a priority.
So if council decides that they like the scope that has been identified, which we've previously had some consensus on, if one of the more of the revenue options do not come to pass, would going through that process be a waste of staff time without identifying other revenue options?
So I think if you go back to some prior work sessions that we have on this matter, I do think it's important that we have revenue certainty before we actually hire physicians. From a waste of time perspective, the portion of this presentation this evening that spoke to the code compliance process is actually a set in the right direction, regardless of whether the revenue package is resolved. I think if you look at our current nuisance code entitled eight of the Fort Angeles Municipal Code, you'll find it is archaic, it needs a great deal of updating. There's value in the changing those codes, regardless of whether we implement actually new stacking to enforce code and follow through with those items. I think back to the scope question that you asked. I think it would probably be staff recommendation. The items you see on those lists, or on the list are items that we hear about daily from community members. They expect all of those issues to be addressed daily. And therefore, we would recommend a more comprehensive list or follow through.
Okay, last question. You mentioned the two part-time code enforcement officers inside the police department that are really commissioned officers. Was that the only additional staff hiring that's recommended at this time?
That is correct.
Okay, so those are my questions.
Any other questions or comments?
I really like the comprehensive approach to this. I think if we piecemeal, we miss important parts. And so I do like the idea of moving forward with a comprehensive approach to it. And I want to be careful because we keep coming back to this. So, I mean, I'm getting kind of myself. I also do have a lot of concerns around moving forward with a levy lift lift this year. In primarily because of what's going on with the school district funding. Because it now looks like there's a potential that the legislature may go back on their controls on local levy limits. And that was a big part of the budget hit for Fort Angeles School District. Never mind the capital bond stuff and the building and all that. There were, there are a lot of programs that we all enjoy that make our school district good because of that levy that the community was willing to support over and over. And then that got cut way back. So the restoration of the levy, whether I think that's the right decision or not from the legislature's standpoint, if that's the mechanism they're going to use to right what I see as a wrong in how they solve McLeary, I would say solved. Then I don't, I'm reluctant to potentially be a roadblock in them being successful in that. This feels important. And so I don't want to create what feels a little bit like an unfunded mandate to staff. But I also am concerned about moving forward with a levy lift lift today. That's...
I haven't spoken yet, so... So I have a lot of thoughts. First, I'm just going to respond really quickly about the McLeary issue. For those who don't know, this is about how local school districts are funded from the state level. McLeary put our personal, our local school district in somewhat of a bind by pinching its revenues. But McLeary brought a lot of equity and equality to our property tax rates. The reason that the school districts are in a bind is because our property tax rates are lower now. They are not getting the same revenue that they did before because the rich school districts in the Appiah District are paying more in property taxes and we as a local school district are paying less in property taxes. That's one of the things. Now, people can argue McLeary didn't go far enough down that path. That is a totally reasonable point. But we are paying less in property taxes because of McLeary. So that's one of them. And you know, the other thing that I would just mention is we are not school board members. I am a huge part of our local school district. I was involved deeply in the last school bond effort. It's, it was a complicated effort. I don't want to be litigated, but we're not school board members. We are tasked with running this meeting with the school city government. And I think that's what we should be discussing. I, you know, just to preface kind of my comments, I recognize the political reality we face. I recognize the economic reality many of our citizens face. This is not, none of these discussions are easy. One thing that I don't want to, you know, if you look at the resolution that we're talking about, we are asking for general fund revenue to support public safety services and implement a new code enforcement program. That is as specific as our resolution is. We are not, you know, you know, so if there's some concern about the permanence of this, we are asking for general fund revenues to support public safety services. That is something I support. You know, I completely understand that, you know, some people feel like this is somewhat of a bait and switch. But we are being clear, we are not saying that all of these revenues are going to go to enforcement. And then if that program becomes unsustainable, we are saying these are to support public safety services. Earlier in our public comment, a public safety officer came to us imploring us for more revenue so that our public safety services could be supported. It is very hard for me as a public official to hear, you know, that and do nothing. It is a very difficult thing to say we should raise property taxes on our citizens. But we are doing it to support public safety services. So that, that's, you know. With regard to some of the comments that have been made, I've heard this brought up before. But savings within enterprise funds cannot generally be used to fund general fund initiatives. Building permanent revenues have similar spending restrictions. Our CE department will probably need additional staff to service and process these permits that were brought up in a reasonable timeframe. So if building permanent revenues are up, we'll probably need to spend that just to make that department run smoothly. We're not, you know, we're not going to see, I don't personally expect us to see a huge influx of general fund unrestricted revenue that we can just use for any initiative that we want as a result of all this economic spending that we do enter state, which at this point is not guaranteed by the way. Secondly, I point out to my colleagues that the goal of the program is to gain compliance, we've heard that a couple of times. The goal of the program is not to levy fines on our citizens. I would, I would say that our police can attest to the damage that's done by the public perception that police officers have quotas for tickets. We do not want to then install that as a, as a real thing to say we want a code compliance program that self sustains itself. We should not want a code compliance program that self sustains itself because then we're saying to those code compliance officers, go out and get fines. We should not want that. We should want a program that gains compliance, which means that if we want to fund that program, we need stable revenues outside of fees and fines. So this should not be seen as a revenue package just in the fees and fines of the program for a self-sustained program. I think that's a bad policy outcome. So with all that said, I'm sure there's going to be more discussion. I appreciate the discussions we've had. I will not support this motion.
All right, any further discretion?
Yes, I, I do not support a levy lift. The school district will be coming to the council and asking us for support for their levy. They always do. And it's so important to our community to have the schools, the support of schools. So that, that will be a decision we'll, we'll have to make in conjunction with the school district. But as for a levy lift, the levy lift needs to come from a united council. We must agree that this is what we're presenting to the community with a united front. We disagree or a split council. And any levy lift that will succeed must have united support from the council and in the community. I believe that there is not strong support from the community, just from what I'm hearing. And it's so important that, it's going to take so much effort and time, staff time and expense for us to put this levy lift on the ballot. We all know our finances are precious and our needs are great. And we must feel confident that it will succeed before we push this new workload onto staff, onto our community. It's an election year. I believe it'll be controversial this year and the fact that we are not united behind it. I think we're setting ourselves up for failure and that's not what we want to do as a council or to our community. We're trying to help our community and listen to the needs. And so I really look forward to an opportunity where staff can bring us back other alternatives. We all agree, I believe there is strong unity that code enforcement is a need in our community. And so that is unifying. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity for staff to bring us back alternatives so we can find some successful avenues of revenue that we can unify behind. And we as a council can present to our community that we're serving and get positive support from our community. Thank you.
Well, just to keep it short, based on my comment that successful levy lift lift measures have full support from the council, although they fail, and based on statements from the previous council members, I'm not in favor of going forward with levy lift.
All right, so, and I'm going to tell all of it. I'm really actually disappointed in the council process because we did have a worship, or I said. But at that time, we all, all gave the consensus that the levy lift lift was a good idea. And so I wish at that time, council would have spoken so that we could have saved all this. So talking about, you know, waste of time. Now we are a direct council and so therefore, it's, it's pretty obvious that this is something that is really not going forward well. So we will continue to look forward and we will need to ask staff to look for other revenues. I think the right thing to do is to support this because we really do need it. I totally agree with Councilwoman French. We need it, but it doesn't make any sense with staff's time on a process that we all had originally agreed to and now we're not agreeing on it. So except from that standpoint, I'm quite down to this point.
So, okay.
So I, I want to say that I would support the levy lift lift because it is something that although, I know that folks are shaking their hands in the audience, that it's something that is not a pleasant thing to do. But from the safety standpoint, from all the calls we get about the junk cars, for the animals, for all those things that are on that list, we currently as a city cannot supply that service. And it is a service that the folks ask for. So, so I am, I've been a little disappointed in the whole process and I, it's like, when you see something failing that could have been avoided in the beginning, it's disappointing. So knowing that I don't want to waste staff's time moving forward in this, I won't be supporting this, but I still believe in that process.
So I just want to inform my colleagues one last time. Our, our, you know, Penn Comm supervisor came here to our meeting tonight to say we need more general fund revenue to support public safety services. We have an opportunity to do that tonight. We have an opportunity to let our citizens tell us whether they would support that and then if possible, take that to a ballot. I, I don't think that it's a foregone conclusion that our citizens would not support paying a very small increase in property taxes to support public safety services in their city that they are asking us for, time after time, day after day. So please, you have the ability to change your line tonight.
I'd like to make a couple of observations. First of all, relying on property tax and property tax increases is not economically viable with long-term feasible, sorry, Mike. We need to have others, there are other sources of revenue for, for the general fund. We need to understand what they are and we need to work towards increasing and improving those additional sources to the, to the general fund and make them sustainable over the long term. That's what economic growth and increasing the tax basis is all about. Constantly relying on the citizens to bear the burden of just property owners in this city is an unfair and unnecessary way to approach this. We need to have more creative revenue sources for our general fund than just constantly going back to the citizens and saying, "Well, you wanted it, so you've got to pay for it." Well, that's not the case and it shouldn't be the case. And I point out again and again, property tax is not the only source of revenue for the general fund. We need to have a better handle on the alternative sources of revenue for our general fund and we need to work on those. Economic growth is the key here. And property tax increase is not an indication of economic growth. It is a recessive tax. And I would never support a property tax lift, especially at this, at this time in our economy. It is regressive, in my opinion.
All right, I'd just like to clarify, so are you suggesting sales tax revenue or utility tax revenue? Because...
What?
Those are regressive law and regressive tax definition.
All right, any further comments? All right, we have a motion on the table. And a second, to drop, yeah, can you read those? To drop the levy lift lift revenue options.
The motion is to remove the property tax levy increase from consideration as a funding mechanism for code compliance.
All right, so that's the motion.
I guess just to see a little further because I do agree with Councilman French that for we as a council, we need to explain to the people what's structural deficit we have in the general fund. That on a quarter of the general fund revenue comes from property tax and has a 1% increase per year. That 60% of the general fund revenue or expenses goes to public service or public safety salaries, police and fire. And that's going up closer to the consumer price index. So to 3% a year. So reconcile that. How do we reconcile that? We can't. And I agree with Councilman Moran that there need to be other options, more creative options. But we're also in a system where the state legislature said they get to decide what our options are. And, you know, we can press this door or this door, but those are the only options we have. So, you know, it's not like we can... So, you know, it's not like we can get ourselves out of this box. You know, we're seen as the children of the state. Frankly, the state needs to have CPS call on it. So that's my opinion on that. But where's our other coming from? We're trying to negotiate with the unions and giving our employees their salaries and competitive salaries, and at the same time seeing that our, you know, the property tax revenue into the general fund is not keeping around. So the other options are sales tax or utility tax or basically allocations from the utility fees that we pay that basically goes to where employees and departments outside of public works. All three of those are basically coming from the people as well. The utility taxes are part of our utility bill. Utility fees are our utility bill, so we're paying that as well. And, you know, there's not much of a difference between having utility bills and having property tax. Just you pay one twice a year and you pay the other two times a year. And then sales tax, yeah, that's an option, and we can have other, you know, anyone who buys stuff in the city pay sales tax. And that's part of why the transportation recruitment district was successful in that we, you know, it was marketed as, you know, people having to use the roads are going to be paying for the roads, not just residents of Port Angeles paying for the roads. But we also know that sales tax is cyclical, and trying to rely on sales tax, it seems much more dicey to me than relying on more stable tax revenues like property tax and utility tax. Now, I totally agree that all these are aggressive taxes, and I'm not a fan of the system in general. But right now, we're playing, you know, within the boxes that are drawn for us, and I don't see another option. I look forward to those creative options that Councilmember Rand mentions. But, you know, we aren't given the authority as a city by the state to exercise them. So there's bigger structural problems here. If we're not willing to be champions for this, then I think any single council member basically has veto power. And that's what I've heard from three of our council members. So, you know, as the member pointed out, we did have a work session, and we did all say, "Yeah, let's move forward with this." So don't say, "Now will be the wasting staff time." Because those who changed their mind after having the opportunity to consider this, fully get a work session and saying, "Yes, I support this," are the folks who wasted staff time. And, you know, we need to address these structural issues without having the authority to do so. And it's a big problem that the whole community needs to address.
Kind of just really quick, I want to add, you know, we're paying for this already because the lack of a code compliance program, the lack of additional, you know, funding for public safety so we can have more officer presence on the streets, that results in, you know, depressed property values. That means that we have to stretch each individual property owner more to collect the money that we're authorized to collect from the increased property values. We'll spread that out in a more, you know, even democratic way. So, you know, we're choosing to get the worst outcome here because we're afraid of the worst tax. And like I said, I recognize the economic, you know, the reality that we're in. But again, I was just in part, we're asking for additional funds to use to support public safety services. You know, look yourself in the mirror.
All right, folks, so we've had a discussion. We've got a motion on the table. So again, the motion is to drop the levy lift, the consideration to pay the code enforcement.
Can I ask a quick process question? Not about what we're doing, but just about the process of the levy lift. I feel like maybe I misunderstood, so I just want to clarify that I maybe misunderstood something before. In order to move forward with a levy lift going on about, is a public hearing required, or it was just the recommended procedure moving forward?
It is not required legally. Council asked for that. Majority in council asked for that.
Thank you for that reminder.
All right, folks, so let's take a look here. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Yes.
I misvoted the first time. I'm an a.
So let's do it, yeah, let's do a show of hands. So the show of hands, if you vote yes, that means that you're supporting dropping the levy lift. And so although I believe in it, I don't want to waste time, so I'm going to vote yes in this motion. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Wait, you're changing your vote? I was in case.
No, I voted to not do this process because we have a united council. So we have four for this motion, so all those against. All right, folks, so we got through the first part, so now we need to, so we don't need to pass the motion for a public hearing. We have to confirm the intended scope of the code enforcement program. So do we agree that the intended scope of the program is what we want?
I agree to agree with the intended scope of the code enforcement program that's listed in the council packet in the presentation today.
Need a second for that? Second. All right, any further discussion on that?
I don't think that's appropriate, and we have a stable voting option for hiring two-part-time office, five-year-long officers.
Wait, you mean we can't just have a boardroom without permitting yet?
Madam Mayor?
I would like to, an opportunity for staff to bring us back alternate funding sources, perhaps more successful options for us to consider.
But they did that.
Right. They can come back with more options.
So, well, let's stick to this first point. So let's confirm the intended scope of the code enforcement program. I understand that although we don't have the funding, we can still move forward with policy changes and things like that that can get us there and try to impress the scope of the whole thing. And then we will work on the funding. So, yes.
Just a comment or maybe a question. Can't we address this one step at a time as Attorney Blor said? First thing is to revise the nuisance code. Let's address that. That doesn't take any funding right now. It just takes staff time. And so let's go with that. And then in the meantime, staff can work on alternative funding sources if we see the need to move forward with other sections of it. But I would strongly recommend that the revised nuisance code be addressed by the council. And so the next step in my mind would be for staff to provide us what that nuisance code is going to look like specifically. And then also down the road, about 130 to 150 is not good enough. Okay, I want to see a budget on this thing because before I'm willing to go any direction of funding, I need to know what I'm funding. About is not, from my perspective, is not cutting it. So I'm sorry, guys, but you're going to have to do better than that.
Any further comments on the motion?
Yeah, just to say, that's $140,000 plus minus $10,000. That's reasonable margin there with a lot of uncertainties about salaries and compensation benefits. And then the other thing to say is frankly, time is money. When, you know, we're talking about trying to come up with a program that really requires staff time, we need to fund the staff. So I don't think it's fair to say, "Well, this just requires staff time, so it doesn't really require any revenue." That said, I am in support of moving forward with the proposal as is and the outline as presented. And we did talk about there's a number of other potential funding options other than levy lift. And so it just requires going back to using that list. But I don't undermine that, you know, I trust that actually staff. But I'm forward with the fourth proposal, so if I had a lot of merit, and if we're all going to go forward with that, then it's not us to say, "Okay, do the work without us providing additional funding."
All right, so we have a motion on the table, a second to confirm the intended scope of the code enforcement program as was stated in the presentation and in the packet. Okay, so, no further discussion.
Well, I'll just, to clarify what I voted, I cannot support this motion because in, you know, part of that is number three, the police department hired two part-time code enforcement officers. I don't believe there is revenue available to do that, so I cannot support that part, so I will not vote aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like a little, can you refer to the intended scope of the enforcement program? A little clarity on that. So we know we need code enforcement. It was eliminated due to a financial emergency when we suddenly lost a mill. We lost, we have an $800,000 budget deficit. And so now we're trying to work toward reinstating our code enforcement program. So when we're confirming, so can I just get another broad definition of confirming the intended scope?
Well, there's six points in the packet.
Right.
So important, please, okay, you've had a number of opportunities to speak. Please let everybody else have the opportunity to speak also.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, I know it's in the packet. And all of those during the presentation, this floor showed that dealing with the junk cars, that it would be dealing with the animals, so it is all of those things included. It does include in the packet that I said, in the police department, hire two code enforcement. And obviously, we won't be able to move forward all of these immediately as soon as we find funding. We're able to both move forward, so. Did I clarify? For you?
Well, I know what we want to do. So the intended scope at this time is just, we are setting forth our goals, I guess. Our goals for code enforcement. We're not, haven't identified funding, which is basically setting forth our goals. Thank you.
Council, if it's all helpful, I think you saw your council number broken down into three recommendations. The scope specifically references the one slide that outlines those items that we can enforce against including nuisances, land use, zoning, dump vehicles, et cetera, as the mayor mentioned. The program is the component that outlines the number of officers, the hiring to be done, and the details of the program. If that helps differentiate, maybe I have any additional clarifying questions?
Thank you. All right, folks, so we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to clarify, you know, one thing that I said after work session is that what makes these programs successful is the certainty of punishment, not the severity of punishment. So I cannot support a scope that provides for certain severities that gives no certainty that punishment will be there by not funding officers to enforce.
But also remember that as Manager West said, it's also that we are going to be dealing with the junk vehicles, with the animals, that that's the whole scope, the program details. All right, folks, we have a motion on the table, a second. All those in favor of the motion of supporting the intended scope as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Six to one. And now we need, so I guess what we're being asked is to approve the motion, to approving and authorizing the code enforcement program as outlined in the intention of this memo. So the program itself as the way it's been outlined. So the program itself, there are those six items that are on page 55. There are code revisions, the contact lists. So can we just kind of model through this a little bit too much?
Can I ask, so I have a question that I think would help me decide how to move forward on this. If we were to approve and authorize the code enforcement program as outlined in the intention of this memo without identifying a permanent funding source, would your intention, would staff's intention be to move forward as far as possible and then come back and say, "Okay, we've reached the threshold at which we've reached what we can do with the current funding. Now if you want to move forward with the rest of it, we're going to need to figure something else out." Or are we putting you potentially in a position of struggling to, trying to find if there's a way to, because we have not been forward with the levy lift, can we say just a general yes to what's been laid out without locking you into having to move forward with things that you have, that you had for, you know?
If it's awful, what you would be adopting is the outlining of the program. It's not establishing the program itself, and we're not going to fully ramp up and establish the program itself until the revenues are funded to do so. So it's simply establishing the outline of that program.
Is that clear?
Thank you. That answers my question.
All right, so then in that case, time will be the motion.
I move that we approve and authorize the code enforcement program as outlined in the intention to this memo.
Does anyone need a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on this?
I will be supporting this motion as I stated before, that the certainty of punishment is more important than the severity of punishment. And so I can't support, you know, I support code revisions, and that's, you know, I don't support telling the police department, "Hey, we want you to do this, we're hiring you eight months ago." So I ain't supporting this motion.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Pass the second one. And then I think as a final step, I think we've been mentioning often that we need to tell staff to see if they find other means to raise revenue. So we should give that direction this time now. So I'm on the motion.
So move.
So, a second. All right, so we have a motion on the table that tells staff to find other means to raise revenue.
Bring back alternate suggestions.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
I will be supporting the motion. We did that. They came back to us. There's not some, you know, magic gold just simply said golden, "Hey," that everybody can find. They came to us with difficult questions, and we were trying to pull some escape hatch.
Well, that's not entirely true. There were a number of items. I recall, there were a number of items on this, and four were presented to council on work session.
And we had all agree on the whole board. So, okay, so we have a motion on the table, and a second to ask staff to raise levy. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, just a second. All right, folks, I think we are done with this item. It is 8:29. I think we need a break here, and absolutely we'll come back. And we will continue with other considerations while we continue to think and discussion. The first item on the thinking discussion is parking. And parking is, so, is the reason this was yours to begin with?
Yeah, we're talking about parking. After all that, we're talking about parking. So I just want to start by sharing the, I think there are 10 or so parking management principles. And this is out of Sustainable Transportation by General Calhoun.
And there's more details here, but I'll just read out the principle, like the one nine, and not, not give you the details. But I think it helps to capture some of what to go for as we talk about parking. So, these are more than just principles.
I, I just want you to repeat the reference I, I didn't take, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. It is Sustainable Transportation Planning by Jeffrey Tomlin.
Thank you.
So, parking management principles, number one, and I'm cutting my head off as I was, as I was saying. A one-size-fits-all solution never works for parking. Number two, ensure that some parking is always available everywhere. Number three, ensure that the public perceives that parking is always available. Number four, ensure that parking facilities are shared. Number five, put the customer first. Number six, manage the entire parking supply as part of a coherent system. Number seven, analyze alternatives before increasing parking supply. Number eight, use parking as a tool to manage roadway congestion. Number nine, sight curb cuts to avoid or minimize negative impacts on transit service and pedestrian access. Number ten, maximize the contribution of parking to good urban design. Yes, so, so that was one of the principles. This one also has top ten parking management strategies, I get into more of the details, but I can stop there or I can read out just the, the names of the strategies. Choose a little bit more concrete ideas from what those principles can mean in practice if you want.
Go ahead.
So, the top ten parking management strategies. Strategy one, park once. Strategy two, create a commercial parking benefit area. Several pages amount. Uh, strategy three, invest meter revenues in area-wide improvements in transportation demand management. We're always talking about transportation management things. Strategy four, create residential parking benefit areas. Strategy five, provide universal transit assets. Strategy six, unbundle parking costs. Strategy seven, require parking for car-sharing vehicles. Strategy eight, require parking cash out. Strategy nine, remove minimum parking requirements. And strategy ten, fund parking facilities with user fees and revenue bonds. So, transportation demand management, just very briefly, and this is from the Victoria Transport Policy Institute. Their website is vtpi.org, and this is on page vtpi.org/tdm, which is of course the acronym for transportation management. They say transportation demand management, otherwise TDM or mobility management, is a general term for strategies that result in more efficient use of transportation resources. This encyclopedia, so this is the online TDM encyclopedia, is a comprehensive source of information on innovative management solutions to transportation problems. Provides detailed information on dozens of demand management strategies, plus general information on TDM planning and evaluation techniques. It's produced by the Victoria Transport Policy Institute to increase understanding and participation of transportation demand management. So, I'd be happy to talk more about those different principles or strategies, or, or where we have loading fruit, where we may be going in the right direction, maybe we're going in the wrong direction. But I appreciate the opportunity to talk about housing, housing, and, and just keep allowing them.
Would you see that other council members who would like to pipe in on some of their issues about parking?
Well, I mean, I think parking is something that we hear a lot about, that there isn't enough of it. And I don't know that I believe that there isn't enough of it. Certainly, my personal experience is I've never had to park more than a couple blocks away from anywhere I'm going. Particularly downtown, I think the, the central business district is in a different, it's a different kind of parking issue than the rest of the city. And I think we're already doing some things well down there. One program that I read about that is something that at some point might be worth considering for downtown, and if we get to a point where if business owners feel like they're at that point. Because downtown Olympia has a major parking issue, their business district is subsidizing bus passes for employees to take the bus downtown, so that they're not bringing a vehicle down and taking up a parking place for a customer, which makes good financial sense. And whether I think the best place for the bus station, oh, it's not the right word, the transit center is downtown, it is downtown. So, not everyone with our current best routes can easily get downtown, but it is the easiest place to get to in our city. So, I don't know, I think that's just something that I read about that I thought would be worth throwing out there as a potential future, future issue, uh, future idea to consider. The other thing is, we read a lot about cities that have done away with parking minimums, and I know that we have some parking minimums. But I also don't know, because I haven't done enough research, so something I would be interested in learning is whether there's a way to quantify if there are businesses that didn't happen because of the cost of the parking associated with the parking minimums. And I don't want to assume that we have lots of businesses that haven't. And I know there are ways around that with variances and that sort of thing. So, I'm not, my comment is not to say that staff is at work with businesses where that were clearly turning people away or anything. But, but I know that there's a lot of really powerful data about the business development that has happened in cities that have done away with parking minimums. So, I just think that's something else that might be worth looking at, whether moving into the future, not right now, necessarily, but moving into the future, whether that's something that we might look at that would make a difference. And anecdotally, I don't know if it's true, so, nevermind, I shouldn't bring that. Uh, it's an example that I think, until I can confirm that it's true, I won't use. But I think there also may be some confusion in how we word things that we might want to look at, just for people to be able to do research, to know whether their business will be needing parking, that sort of thing. Uh, and I just think it's important to remember that even on-street parking in front of your house is, we pay property taxes, but we've just talked about the, the need in the general fund for things that we want to do and how we, we don't have a sustainable general fund, generally speaking. And parking, free parking is one of the biggest subsidies that our taxpayers are providing. And I don't just mean in municipal lots downtown, I mean, all of the roads that we maintain that allow people to park. Um, and I think that's just something that we should consider as we think about parking and revenue and the area infrastructure and all of that.
All right, good job.
So, the common complaint is there's not enough parking. I think that should be revised to, the common complaint is I can't park within two feet of the business in which I want to go into. I think he has a sore on his heart there. I have managed to park fifty-five feet of truck and trailer somewhere, either downtown, if I want to go down there, if I was picking up my daughter from ballet or whatever it may be. I have no problem bringing out, how to park at fifty-five feet on Lincoln Street somewhere. It may require you to walk a couple of blocks. What do we do about handicap parking downtown in front of businesses? I don't really know how you get those folks close to those businesses. And I don't have a solution for that, but able-bodied citizens, park and walk. Get around, look around your city, maybe you'll walk by something, you'll actually notice that you'll want to go into a store and see what's in there. But I don't think we have a lack of parking per se. My concern is that we may have a lack of parking in the next three to five years with the stuff that's going on downtown. I also hear a lot of people say, it will be a long cold day in hell before I pay to park in the city of Port Angeles. I'll let you know I'm in agreement with that. Because once again, if I have to park and walk six blocks or eight blocks, that's what I'm going to do because sure as hell I'm not going to pay for parking in downtown Port Angeles. And that's my choice. People can choose. We visited San Francisco recently, and pay to park is fifty bucks. Now, to take the very rapid transit for six of us was more expensive than the fifty dollars to pay to park. So, we went down there, paid to park, and that is where the vehicle sat the entire day. Parked it somewhere central and walked. When we got home, we checked the phone, because it actually happens to keep track, whether you know it or not. Eight and a half miles. And that is a wide range of kids and myself. And there was a mild amount of complaints. You know, so, I mean, it's, it's all relative. It's get out, exercise, do something, there's places to park, look around, do something in your community, whether that's shop downtown, eat downtown, or anyplace else in our city. As far as paying to park in front of your home or anything like that, well, I was going to say. Okay.
That was not my suggestion, I was just, just to clarify my point quickly. Just that there's a cost associated with maintaining the infrastructure in which we park.
Correct, and the, and the last complaint I hear often is, you have a row of houses on the street, and he or she is parked in front of my house. That's my parking. Well, I understand the concept that that's your house and you would like to park in front of it. But I do believe under our state code or, or the law that that, it's not your parking space. It is frustrating, though, when people have multiple vehicles and they fill up an entire block. You see that especially, you know, where we stayed down in San Francisco. It is combat for these folks to get into parking spaces. I observed this guy, wish I would have been there soon enough to take a video. I, to this day, have no idea how he got into this parking space unless he picked up the car and put it in there. He was just finishing his parking, and there couldn't have been eight to ten inches in front or behind his vehicle. Those folks get serious when it comes to parking. So, do we have a parking problem? I don't know.
Right, so, one, you know, you talked about on-street parking a little bit, about that's my space, that's not my space. In our P A D S code, chapter fourteen point four, on-street parking, there is a matrix that says for land uses for residential building units, we require them to build one parking space, space for every volume of one bedroom or less, or two parking spaces for a volume of two or more bedrooms. So, we're, we're saying, the on-street parking is a county bar, you have to build parking spots on your land if you're going to build a house in the city of Port Angeles. And one thing we should recognize, the, the dread of stormwater order. A lot of, for a lot of residential units, that bumps them up, so then they have to do stormwater management on that property. So, we are telling them, you're required by law to pay this whole bunch of services, even though there's a parking spot on the street, and that's going to drastically increase your development costs. So, that's kind of my, one of my issues that I have with parking as a big conceptual thing. A, a couple other little, you know, I, a lot of what we said, I thought was great, casting a fair. One thing that you point out is, you know, we need to be okay with walking a few blocks. I partly agree. I work downtown on a daily basis, I, you know, not every day, I'll say I do park in the parking lot sometimes. Rarely I pay to park. I try to park at the top of the stairs where I walk up and down the stairs every day, and it's maybe a block. It's super convenient, but we, you know, there is some social pressure that we need to, you know, give able-bodied people that it's okay to walk two blocks. By the way, when you do that, you walk past other businesses that you might not know are there, but you know. But I think that we're missing out if we're only relying on social pressure on that. There are economic pressures that we can install. We can, you know, we say some, a lot of our citizens won't pay for parking, a lot of our tourists will. And a lot of our tourists will pay a lot for it, and they'll think it's extremely cheap. So, we're leaving money on the table if we're not doing some sort of, you know, you know, scalable parking management with regards to charging for some of our city-owned lots downtown. And if we're not charging for them, then again, that is a subsidy to, to people that are drivers. That our citizens that aren't driving are indirectly paying to pay those lots, even though they're not using them. You know, there is, that's a, that's a small point, but I think that's a reasonable point. In my kind of research, because, you know, I see this word parking, and there's no real description of what we're going to be talking about. It's just an open-ended thing. I, I looked into about ten ordinances the city councils passed in its history dating back to nineteen sixty-six, in which most of them were referring to parking minimums. And, you know, I'll, I'll just read a couple quotes, because I, I was reading this law, this law article on should the law subsidize driving? And in its introduction, you had a couple quotes. One is from a Supreme Court decision from nineteen hundred, which says, uh, the Supreme Court of the United States, undoubtedly the right of locomotion to, the right to remove from one place to another according to inclination is an attribute of personal liberty. So, he's saying, you know, we should be allowed to walk around, to move around, that's personal liberty. I totally agree, that's nineteen hundred before cars. We have transitioned to this different system. The, you know, this quote from Yoel VanderWagen. The paradox of transportation in the late twentieth century is that while it became possible to travel to the moon, it also became impossible in many cases to walk across the street. So, you know, do we have that attribute of personal liberty? Do we have the right of, of locomotion? I don't know. In our original municipal ordinance in nineteen sixty-six that created these parking minimums for commercial residential activities, the whereases are, whereas the primary functions of a public street or highway are to, A, provide for the free or restricted movement of vehicles, not of people. To provide for the free or restricted movement of vehicles and provide an access to property. You know, so, I think they got it wrong in nineteen sixty-six. I think we're very far away, away from where we were in nineteen sixty-six. I can go through all the different changes that, you know, subsequent ordinances made to those. We've made, I think, progress each time. But go back and look at that matrix, these are requirements that we're telling people, if you want to help in the city of Port Angeles, this is the requirement, this is the barrier that we're going to put, this is the additional cost that we're going to charge you, that we're going to make you pay yourself if you want the, you know, the privilege of developing in the city of Port Angeles. And many of those cases, I, I really have to say, the parking requirements seem pretty arbitrary, especially when I, you know, not being a professional, not being an expert. It does seem like there is, there seems to be a consensus that that is not best practices. So, you know, I, I don't want to tell developers how they have to develop, I will let the free market decide. If the developer feels that they need to provide parking for that business to be successful, I have full faith that that developer knows and can find out what parking they will require on site. I certainly don't think the government should tell them what that requirement should be. And, you know, I guess I'll, I'll leave it there, but, you know, this is, so far, I think, a really great discussion. I do think that we're missing some longing for, I'm not pricing some parking downtown, especially in, you know, lots not on-street, um, to create kind of a, a, you know, a few tranches of payment. Some free, some timed, some pay. Because I think that there's, you know, I have employees that pay to park every day downtown, because it's not worth the, the effort for them to try to evade the police officer the checks occasionally. It's not, you know, it's, it's not enough for them to evade me as a manager saying, stop parking in our customers' parking spots. And so, you know, they pay on a daily basis, they work five days a week, they pay five days a week, and they are on top of that, you know, so.
All right, any other sort of comment?
I, I don't have a comment per se, I, I just have a question. Lindsay, I mean, what's, what's your vision? I mean, what, where are you taking us with, with this, this discussion? I guess I'm not clear, you know, I, you know, I certainly walk across the street to listen to you, so. But I'm, I'm, I'm just not clear where, where you're taking us with this discussion. Again, no value judgment, don't misunderstand me, I, I'm just, I'm not clear.
So, parking intersects so many other issues. So, I think I just want to bear this example of walking over eight miles because they park once in downtown San Francisco illustrates the connection between parking and public health. That when we get out of our cars and walk more, it improves public health dramatically, there's a lot of research on that. Parking intersects with affordable housing. Parking intersects with affordable housing, which is something we as an entire council have talked a lot about. What we're doing now is we're bundling the cost of owning a car into the cost of owning a house, by requiring people to have off-street parking. As Councilmember Finch said, that requirement often triggers, you know, the 2,000 square foot going up a period of space, that triggers a lot of other requirements for stormwater compliance. So, we're, we're forcing people into the situation of paying to have a car at a time when there are more and more transportation options that don't require everybody to own a car. The state of Washington several years ago authorized insurance companies to allow, you know, private insurance to participate in car sharing programs. So, you know, we're, we're very close to being able to, you know, lease our cars out to each other to avoid having to own a car. So we're talking about some developments downtown that don't, that, that have more residents in downtown. One of the first questions that people ask is, well, where are those people going to park? And with the concept of transportation and management, one of the possible answers is, they don't have to park, they don't have to have their own car. They're going to get a car there that they can use when they need, but it doesn't have to be a spot that they're taking out for their own car. At, in a location where it's, it's really valuable to have space, part of what makes downtown work is the density of commercial businesses and stormwatts. Actually makes downtown a great place to walk around, spend time, and there to sustain the economy. So, for us to develop downtown the way that a number of people are talking about, which I support, requires us to think beyond one person, one car. And that's where these concepts around parking come in, because while there's, there's a running congestion on the road, it's often parking that limits where people decide to go and how people decide how they want to get there. So, I think that's why parking is this linchpin in our urban design, and, and it intersects issues of health, issues of affordability for housing, and all these other things that, that we care about as a council, parking is working there, either hindering us or supporting us. And I think some of the things we're doing now with parking are hindering us. There, there's a lot of research, and I think that it's in the book on this, is the high cost of free parking, allowed, will be a tax of free parking. But in saying that, I'm not saying that we should have to pay to park everywhere. All I'm saying, this again, is based on the gentleman's Civil Transportation Planning Book, that we should optimize that in any particular location, there should be about one out of every seven parking spaces available. So, again, there should be parking available everywhere. It's just a question of, how, how we make that happen. So there's a block downtown where you can, you can't find a parking spot in that block, and I think this is the exercise for all of us, when you're somewhere in Port Angeles, stop and look around and say, the nearest seven parking spots, is one of them available? Because that's what we're talking about, about 80% occupancy. Is one out of seven parking spots available? And if so, we don't have a parking problem right there. If there, there's not one out of seven spots available, then we need to do something to make at least one out of every seven parking spots available. And a lot of the, the experts on this suggest that pricing is the way to do that. And they have some authority to point this out, they don't, you wouldn't pay for parking because you'd walk, and that's exactly what, what paying for parking does. It says, something, there's some people who would rather pull up right in front of the store they're going to, and they don't care if they have to pay for it. There's other people, I'm included in this, I would rather park a lot, than walk, than pay for parking, and so I would do that. And we, in that way, spread out the impact, and we continue to make parking available everywhere, which is really the goal of parking, parking manager. It's not eliminating parking, it's making parking available. As drivers, when we're going somewhere, we're trying to park, I don't care how long another car has been in a spot, I don't care if that car's been there for five days, I just care if there's a nearby stop that's available. So what we do now is we say, okay, we're going to try to make parking available by making everybody shuffle their cars every two hours. Well, I, I, as a potential parker, I don't care if it's a different part of the parking spot, I just care if the spot's available. So, that's another angle here, is how we manage downtown parking isn't necessarily achieving the goals we have. One of these strategies is transit passes. I was just talking to Call Transit General Manager today, and he's already been talking with the developer composing the residential buildings downtown, about whether to do a parking pass program and what it might look like. Basically, the developer includes in, in fees for those housing units, a subsidized transit pass program, those people have a transit pass. That then encourages them to take transit without having to pay on a periodic basis, which people that perceive transit being cheaper, even though they're in a car, it's far more expensive to buy than paying for the bus, but we don't pursue that because we don't pay for the price. So, that's the sort of thing that I think is going to help us solve our challenges downtown, getting more people living downtown. I would like to see the Downtown Association consider something like that. And talk to fellow transit and say, okay, why don't all the employees who work downtown have free bus passes, just like municipal college students do? And what would that do for parking availability downtown? And encouraging people to go downtown, so for fellow transit can subsidize those parking rates a lot, like he does with municipal college, in order to allow for the bulk value of the parking passes. So, that's where I'm going with the transportation management stuff.
And actually, I want to, I can, because as a think tank, the idea is that we get a chance to discuss these issues, which I think are really important. And then, if something starts rising to the top, which I mean, we've mentioned a couple times back, we're moving to develop popular markets for residential, and potentially asking the businesses to look into bus passes for employees, and impressing downtown parking lots spaces. So I think those three things that are mentioned a couple of times in these conversations, and I'm wondering, I know that for strategic planning and where we want to move forward, do we want it past staff, or do we want to keep it on, you know, on the list to be added for future strategic planning items to add to our one plan?
I, I would like to see a more discussion of it, because, first thing, it comes to my mind, Lindsay, the buses don't run on Sunday, so Mike, you better not open your restaurant on Sunday. There's, you know, all, all the bus passes in the world are not going to solve that. So, there's, there, I think there's more discussion to be had here, and certain alternatives, and, and I think we need to improve in, in the discussion, significant impacts on things like the COHO. And, you know, we hear from Ryan all the time, how far can you drag a piece of luggage? And so, you may be able to park four or five blocks away, but can you realistically carry a piece of luggage? And that may not be the truth for everybody. So, so in my opinion, I think, I don't think this is a staff issue yet, we need to talk about it, we should have more input from, from people like Ryan Mulane, who, with the COHO, is largely impacted, impacted by what we do parking-wise downtown, so, this is my thoughts.
I think that's a good point, because, you know, we have these general principles, and then we have our specific thing, and, you know, that is, that is one of the issues we have, is we do need to drag a bag parking access. The one other kind of complicated, you know, like we said, a lot of the issues intersect. One of the, I think, good practices that we have followed is we do have a parking business improvement area in downtown. You know, one anecdote is, you know, the waterfront center itself benefits from that parking business improvement area by not, you know, by, by being able to maximize the space on their land, and include other projects that made that project pincel out. If they have a parking minimum, which they would have if they were not in a PBIA, that project, it would not be anywhere near the same scope that it is. And so that's, you know, a success story of how not having a parking minimum, in this case because of being involved in, in a PBIA, does bring a project across eventually, potentially. So, you know, that, that's the other wrinkle is, you know, that PBIA that we have, we want to make sure that it's, that we, you know, if we do changes, that we're, we're considering that part of it.
And I think I'd like to just, the simple, I think, things that we can move forward mean residential parking spaces, because that affects also the APUs and bedrooms, and you're right, it is actually limiting and it's forcing folks to spend more on the stormwater. So, that may be one that maybe is the low-hanging fruit that we can, because it's true, COHO is, there definitely a, a more need of parking than, or maybe a different type of parking there should be.
I would.
So, I will respond to Mr. Nelson.
Madam Mayor, Council, just a few items to report to you this evening. As requested by Council, we did incorporate in your package a detailed update on Lincoln Park, that I would encourage if you have already done so, to, to read that. There's some wonderful memorandums in there, most importantly, the interlocal agreement that we have with the Port Angeles on that park, and I think you'll find those memorandums, and the agreement are very informative. Additionally, I did want to remind Council that on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, we do have a special UAC meeting, which we'd like to have the whole council attend. Again, a continuation of the COSA process, Cost of Service Assessment, for our utilities. We did get a little bit rushed relative to stormwater at the last meeting, so we're going to do a bit of a recap relative to stormwater, as well as try to tackle solid waste at that meeting. Additionally, I want Council to be aware that we're working hard to identify some additional meeting times, and it should, very short timeframe, I recognize this might be hard to come by, but we do think it's really important, Council, have ample opportunity to discuss those causes and not just see those presentations. So we're going to start that in a couple more meetings before around the middle of May. Now, you want to turn it over to Chief Smith, who's going to provide an update on our search for Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If you recall, a couple of months ago, Council and Port County Commissioners authorized respective city and county staffs to work together on exploring options for a joint Emergency Operations Center and 911 Center. In that effort, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Police Department, we were looking at potential options for, you know, a 911 Center E O C and what, what would work. Couple things have sort of fallen off because they're really not, not good options. One thing that came forward in the last couple of weeks was the property of Westport's former location out at the airport. Chief Dubuque, Sheriff Benedict, under Sheriff Cameron toured the site, I wasn't here, I looked at the plans, and we've talked about it, and, you know, putting aside the challenges of looking at space that doesn't belong to the city or the county, and how, how difficult that might be to actually seriously consider something that, you know, we don't own. But just putting that aside for a second, the actual layout of that particular building, 15,000 square feet, and how it's set up, that, that space, the location of the airport, and how we could, how we could adapt 911 Center E O C, it, it looks pretty promising at a west-side fire station. Sheriff Benedict invited me to a, a joint meeting that I think Councilmember Moran was at yesterday, with Port and County Commission, and there's definitely enthusiasm with us to explore further feasibility of, of, of that space.